I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Avalon City Council, Tuesday, August 26th. Would give the roll call, please. Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Protan Olson?
Here.
And Mayor Marshall?
Here.
Is there any public comment before we get started? Since you don't know what we're going to talk about, it's kind of hard, huh? So we can come back to the audience, correct?
Absolutely. And I would suggest, Mayor, that if you like, there may be times during the presentation that, you know, that might be appropriate as well.
Excellent. Okay. All righty. Well, would you like to open it up?
Sure. So Mayor and Council, as we've talked about, water obviously is our most pressing issue. So we thought it was entirely appropriate to come together in a separate session solely to discuss water, freshwater specifically. One of the directions for the council has been to identify additional freshwater sources, to work on a community service district concept, to discuss the impacts of drought on the island, et cetera, et cetera. So with us tonight is Joe Byrne from our city attorney's office. Joe, obviously, is an attorney, but he's also a water expert. He's actually somebody who can say that with a straight face. Joe serves on the state water commission. He's the chairman of the commission. I believe this is your second term as chairman, Joe?
It is, yeah.
Okay. He's a gubernatorial appointee to that commission, and he has a presentation tonight to kind of walk us through water, what we need to keep in mind, and where we should focus our efforts such that we get to where we want to be in the long term. I would like to, after we, and it might not be in tonight's session, but based upon what we discussed tonight, think about and then ultimately formulate a water-related goal, because that is one of the council priorities. You guys have made that clear. And so from this information tonight, I'm hoping that we can get there. So I know we need to queue up the laptop, and I'm wondering if the lighting is gonna, it's gonna be okay? All right. So give us a moment here.
These are getting shorter.
You should have a paper copy here, and I don't know if we, we probably should run some copies for the audience as well. Okay. If anybody would like a copy of the presentation, a hard copy, you can certainly just let Jordan know, and he'll spend the rest of his time photocopying for you. There we go. Okay, so this is our first slide, and do you have the advanced?
I've got the clicker. I've got the pointer as well, so I'm ready to roll.
Everybody can see okay? We're good? Okay. Joe, take it away.
Great. Thank you, Ben. Well, I want to first start by thanking all of you for having me today. I spend most every day talking about water, and at the firm, we've got about 15 people who are working exclusively on water, so this is kind of our lives. I do general counsel work for water districts, and I also do water rights. And as Ben mentioned, I've been on the California Water Commission for, this will be five years, so I'm pretty involved in state policy issues as well. And I guess I'm a water nerd, because I like it, and I like the maps and all that kind of stuff, so. All right. Well, today, I'm going to walk you through, just very quickly, a little bit about the state and how it relates to Avalon, or how it, in some ways, doesn't relate to Avalon, and just an update on the situation. And then I'm going to go into some of the specifics with regards to Avalon and the situation here and the infrastructure, and then, as Ben mentioned, a little bit about what some of the options are, to the extent that there is a desire to have greater control over the water system. This first slide here is just my introductory slide, but I think it, you know, pictures still a thousand words, thousands better than a story. So anyway, we've got, this is Lake Orville, and that is the primary reservoir on the state water project. The picture on the left is from 2011, when it's full, and the picture on the right is from last week, when it's obviously not full. So the state is in a pretty serious situation. I like this one just because it's half dome, shows the differences between January 2012 and January 2014. Before we get any deeper, I know it's, you know, I always do this just because people start talking about acre feet and cubic feet per second and million gallons per day and all that stuff, and I always have to have my calculator out. But the standard terminology of which also your tariffs are based on with the reservoir levels is an acre foot, which is 325,000 gallons. It's enough for one or two households a year, depending upon how conservation-conscious you are, and I think, in fact, I'd be positive that here on the island, folks are using a lot less than that. Okay, briefly, on the California water system, as you can see, water moves around the state. The important thing on this slide is that red is the state system, blue is the federal system, green is our local systems. You could see, you know, the Chinatown LA aqueduct there, this is the Colorado River Aqueduct, the state system from the delta, the Sacramento River in the north, and that's why the delta is such a topic of discussion, because it's really the hub of the state and the federal system as it comes down. And I think important to note on this slide, this is the Department of Water Resources slide, you know, there is no Catalina down there, and it's not a part of the system. So I think it's kind of a theme as we talk about the state today, is that, you know, we're not necessarily on the radar, and getting on the radar for potential funding and things like that, I think is very important. Okay, just so you know a little bit about what you hear in the paper, the major issues going on in the state right now, one is the delta. You hear a lot about the Bay Delta Conservation Plan. It's essentially a plan to fix the delta, because in the delta, it's where the Sacramento River and the San Joaquin Rivers come and meet the San Francisco Bay. So you've got a salt-freshwater mix. At the bottom of the delta, where there's freshwater, is the four bay and the pumps for the state and federal projects. There's a very delicate salt and freshwater balance. There's been a variety of environmental issues, and most notably, the delta smelt people have heard about, that have impacted, those are endangered species. So because of the endangered species, the protections are afforded, it's really impacted the reliability of pumping. So there's this massive effort, in addition to the drought, to try to fix the environmental issues in the delta so that it improves the overall ability to move water south. And that is why you hear so much about that. Colorado River has been in serious drought up until this year. This year was a wet year, but California is entitled to take less than it has in the past, so that's a problem. There's a major effort right now on groundwater, as you know, because there's very little surface water, if any, that's being provided this year by the state and federal governments. Everyone, particularly in the Central Valley, is pumping groundwater like crazy. It's causing a major overdraft, historic overdraft, and ultimately, there's a very strong effort, and it's likely that we're the only state in the United States that does not regulate groundwater, and it looks like we might have some form of regulation by the end of this session, which will be by the end of next week. Or, I'm sorry, I think the end of session is Sunday night, so we'll know by Sunday night. Increasing water quality standards, there's new chromium-6 standards, which are very challenging for people. Climate change, of course, we get more rain, less snow, less predictable times, and the big one we're having right now, which is highlighting a lot of the problems with the system, is drought. This is the delta, Sacramento River, water comes south. There's the four bay where the pumps are. Here is the San Francisco Bay. Here's the San Joaquin River. And in here are all these islands, and they've been farming them for years. You've got a lot of land subsidence, so that your levees are actually higher than the islands are. And that's why, when you hear about the Napa earthquake just a couple days ago, a lot of water people were really worried that if some of these levees fail, it can ultimately have this kind of effect. So this is if there was a 6.3 earthquake centered on the delta. That's the saltwater intrusion within the first, I think it's, I can't quite see it on the slide, first three to four hours. This is the saltwater intrusion within the first day, and here's the saltwater intrusion in three days. So you can see, there's the four bay where they pull the water from. You can't pull saltwater and move it south. So that's why, literally, the focus of the state has been really on the delta, and then now drought, and there's been little other focus. And it's hard to engage department before the drought on anything other than delta. This is the last slide on the overview, state water project deliveries. As you know, the Metropolitan Water District is the largest contractor in the state water project contract, water project. There was 29 contractors who paid in the '60s under the first Governor Brown to build the project in exchange for long-term contracts. And the whole point of this slide is that delivery reliability was great, and then it was getting worse, and this has to do with environmental restrictions and drought. And this year is unprecedented. It's at 0% right now to go to 5% in September. So the entire state is really in a panic from a water standpoint, and the only reason why we're surviving in the south is because Metropolitan Water District has stored water in Lake Mead, and they've stored water in the ground in the Central Valley. They've got deals with the state where they can pull up water they otherwise wouldn't be entitled to. Everyone is implementing their drought contingency plan. So I guess the point is, we are not alone in the fact that we're scrambling. There are a lot of people who are calling out for help.
Hey, Joe, before you go forward, can we switch microphones with you and Denise? I think that microphone might be a little fuzzy. Let's try.
I wouldn't want to be fuzzy. All right. Is that better?
I think that sounds better.
Am I too close?
It's all right.
Just move yours over to Denise.
Denise doesn't want. You want to have a voice as well.
Yeah, that's got better clarity. Thank you.
Okay. So here's just facts and figures on the drought. It was declared in January. Snowpack in May 1st was 12% of average. It's the driest year on record. It's the first time in recorded history of the drought, as far as the regions of the state, that the whole state has been in drought. It's also the hottest year on record, and rainfall totals, especially in the sun California, are extremely low. This is, you may have seen this slide, this is a popular slide amongst water nerds who are presenting on the drought, but this shows snow in a satellite image of California in January 2013. There it is in 2014. Obviously, it's a very stark difference. This is the July, May 1st snow survey, real easy job for that guy.
No job security there.
And here's Lake Orville, which, as I said, is kind of the real hub of the state water project system. This picture was taken about two months ago, so it's even lower than that. And that's Folsom Dam. I don't know if you've ever been up to Lake Folsom? That lake goes up and down a lot, because they release water out of there for fish for the delta. In this last slide, I couldn't resist, there's been a lot of land subsidence in around the delta and the Central Valley because of, you know, groundwater, if you suck a lot of groundwater, potentially, you know, you're going to get land subsidence, because groundwater really is, percolating groundwater is, you know, between the rocks and earth and sand and all that. So over the years, here in the southern San Joaquin Valley, the land subsidence has resulted in that level of change, which is pretty dramatic. Okay, so two issues which directly affect the island, even though I think those statewide issues do as well, as far as the climate it creates and how we interact in it. The water bond was adopted by the legislature, I think it was a week ago or 10 days ago now. It still needs to be passed by the voters in November. Water bond that was on was 11.5 billion. Now it's 7.5. The whole thought was to take out the pork and reduce the numbers, it was more palatable. The drought, I think, is really helping, and I just read today that the possible opponents are no longer going to oppose, so I think that the bond has a great chance of success. There are a variety of different pots of money for our relevant purposes. The most relevant is here. Well, there's a lot of relevant purposes, but this one is very good news for us. It's the 100.5 million that goes to the state coastal conservancy, and this, I think we have to thank something number Lowenthal, who advocated on behalf of the island. And in the money that goes to state coastal conservancy, it specifically says that, you know, a few regions are eligible and included in that category, and includes Catalina Island. So while it doesn't guarantee it, it's still a competitive process. The fact that the island is mentioned, I think, is very positive, and the money in that category can go towards a variety of things. It has to be multi-benefit, so it's kind of watershed protection, but it could also be water supply. You know, the details of how the department is going to interpret all of these categories are going to be worked out, so being engaged with them, to the extent that we have projects who want to apply for money, is something that we'll have to do. I also want to mention this $810 million here that goes to the IRWM, that means Integrated Regional Water Management Groups. And essentially, that's, the state is sending money out to regional groups that have coordinated. The reason why it's relevant for us is that we are not within an IRWM region. We're not, you know, and I've talked to the department about that just recently, and, you know, to our, I think it's a negative in the sense that everyone has got these groups, they all put forward projects, there's a lot of money that's available. The positive is, I think the department, through talking with them, is recognizing that that is a missing link. Whether or not we'll join a region or be treated separately or not remains to be seen, but, you know, we've got a lot of good relationships, and ultimately, are going to try to make sure that there are, is awareness that Avalon is not included there. One last thing on water storage. That money unfortunately is, that goes to the water commission, which I'm on, which is, you know, good for me, but for purposes of the island, it is not good, because it has to relate to relieving pressure upon the delta. And I don't think the hydrology of it supports that. So there is 725 million for water recycling projects, that could be relevant, also groundwater cleanup and management. So there's a lot of pots of money that we could potentially participate in. The question really for the city is, you know, what are the projects that we support? You know, are they projects the city would do, are they projects that Edison would do? You know, how does all that stuff work?
Were you going to explain it more, or if not, could you explain what groundwater cleanup and management is?
Yeah, sure. I mean, removing pollutants from groundwater, there's a number of groundwater basins that are extremely contaminated, so I think the focus of that is on that. But on the groundwater management, it's a little vague in the bond, but it could involve, and this is where I think the department is going to develop regulations to interpret the statute, and as they develop that, whether that involves regular groundwater projects or not would remain to be seen. But there is potential for groundwater projects in the 100.5 million potentially. There's also on the water recycling projects, a lot of opportunity for that, as well as some stormwater capture money. I think the state, in doing, in this, and also in their thinking, they're desperately looking at alternatives to just building dams, of which we're probably going to build a few in the next 20 years, but they're looking at a lot of these options, and they're very supportive of at least going down the path to explore them, including water recycling is one of the big ones. So the Catalina Water System, I know that you all know it well, and probably better than I do, so I won't walk you through it. I think I'm just going to identify key things that are important for purposes of figuring out how you may want to proceed. As you know, the system is owned and operated by Edison, and includes wells, reservoirs, a D-SAL plant. I was just informed by Councilmember Olson that the approximate use last year was about 320 or 50, so I'm high on my estimation there. You know, the groundwater wells and Thompson Reservoir, they're all located outside of the city boundaries, which is relevant for purposes that I'll mention later. The D-SAL plant also, which I understand is here, is also owned by Edison. Potable water use, it may be a little high, but it's, you know, between 400 and 500 acre feet a year, 450. As you know, the city is not the provider of the potable water service. The city does not own the potable water infrastructure. That is all done by Edison, who's PUC-regulated. Now, on the water rights, and I also was just informed by Councilmember Olson of some history to the island, that apparently there's an agreement where the city may have ceded its water rights to Edison when Edison first started providing the service. You know, if that is the case, and I think that's fairly clear, the city doesn't have any water rights. Even if that weren't the case, you know, Edison is the owner and controller of the water rights that they are exercising and delivering in the city at present. You know, the water rights, there's a few different kinds of water rights. For our purposes, groundwater is the most important, and it would be very difficult, given the property the city has, or the lack of property and the existing Edison rights, for the city to develop much water of its own. But not necessarily impossible, but as I'll talk to you later, very difficult and prohibitive for the city to provide that to third parties. Okay, so the city is a water provider, and this is, I think, kind of an obvious question, is can the city develop new sources and provide water to its residents? As I just mentioned, from a water rights standpoint, we don't have any. However, we do own some property, the basics of groundwater rights, or that you are entitled to pump water above your property for what's reasonable in your, on top, on your property. So it's more complicated to develop water rights to pump and transport off of your property. So that would be, given Edison's presence, that would be very difficult. In addition, there's something in the water, in a public utilities code, it's called service duplication laws, which were passed years ago to protect utilities from cities actually duplicating the service, and it was designed, designed in the first place to protect the infrastructure investments that these private utilities were making. But essentially, that entitles, if you provide the same service, so technically, we could provide service, but if we provide the same service that Edison was providing in their service area, they would be entitled to damages, similar to a condemnation. So what that would be, it's hard to say, but that would be, in addition to whatever the cost of providing the water would be to us. So very, pretty prohibitive. So as currently structured, you know, collaboration with Edison would be required without having to, if you did not want to run afoul of the service duplication laws and those costs. Okay, options for additional sources of water. So I've talked with Ben about a lot of things, and I guess a theme of the presentation is that, you know, with Edison as the owner of the infrastructure and holder of the water rights, a lot of these options are very dependent upon them and what they are willing to do or not. So new wells, which I know that they're exploring and planning to be, build a deep well, and in the process of doing that right now, that would be something that, again, they would own and operate. There would be surface, service duplication issues for the city if we were to pump water ourselves and provide it to a third party. I understand that we do have a well that provides some water for city property, some brackish water, and there's another distinction, it's not potable water. And also, as I mentioned before, we have limited property developed water rights. The next option is delivery of imported water to the island. I know there's been a lot of very concerned citizens and altruistic ones who have been offering to try to help in some way to bring water over from, or shrewd businessmen, one way or the other, trying to bring water over from the mainland. And I think there are some options there. Obviously, cost is a major issue, and of course, if we were to introduce the water into the Edison system, that would involve Edison as well. I think there is a potential water quality issue that I'm aware of, or the chlorine or chloride, I'm not sure exactly, I can't remember the, exactly what it is, and Ben may know, that they use over here is different from what the city of Long Beach uses. And we did talk to the city of Long Beach, and they do have some ideas for us to be able to get some water, but I think it would cause a problem for Edison's system, and as I indicated earlier, it would be something that Edison would want to have to do. The city would have to figure out, you know, are we going to pay for it? Are they going to pay for it? If we're going to pay for it, how would that work? And also, I guess, on, the Navy is providing water to San Clemente.
San Clemente Island.
San Clemente Island, and that's something that could be an option as well. However, cost is an issue, and then the involvement of Edison as well. Okay, recycled wastewater. Now, this is an area which is growing dramatically, and it's something that the state board and the water code and the legislature have spoken to recently as being very encouraging of, and there's a positive attitude towards it. The possible applications are for outdoor uses. That's a much easier path to get approved, and that is happening in water districts throughout California. Aggressively in some, I'll be honest, the one reason why it is not, you know, everywhere is cost. People are evaluating their systems, and putting in the purple pipe throughout the system is something that is costly. The larger agencies are doing it for golf courses and whatnot, large irrigation users, but some of the smaller agencies and mutual water companies are still kind of lagging behind. And these other options are indirect, you may have heard of these, indirect potable reuse and direct potable reuse. Both of those have rather not very nicely been tagged as the toilet-to-tap, although, you know, it's somewhat deceiving. The indirect potable reuse is essentially putting water, you don't put it directly into people's homes, you don't directly put it in your water system. You put it either into a reservoir or into a percolating pond to recharge the groundwater, and then you pump it up. There's a few examples of that that are going on, which I'm going to talk about here. So what are the issues with if we wanted to do indirect potable reuse on the island? So infrastructure requirements, I mean, a lot of this obviously boils down to money. You'd have to significantly upgrade the treatment plant, and one of the issues that's a little problematic for the island is because our wastewater is saltwater, and it's got a little more difficulty in cleaning it than your standard recycled water plant or wastewater treatment plant. So the cost would be more significant to get it to the levels that you would need to for purposes of indirect potable reuse or direct potable reuse. As I indicated before, the levels do not need to be as great for outdoor irrigation uses, so the costs for the upgrades are probably a little lower. I don't unfortunately have estimates of what that might cost, but that's something that, if this is an option that was to be explored, would want to be developed more in-depthly, because that's obviously very important.
Joe, I just have a question. On the significant upgrade to the treatment plant, if you were running, if you weren't running saltwater through the system, saltwater's more expensive to run through our system than, because we, because I think our thought was to run the reclaimed water through our purple pipes, so to speak, our existing saltwater. So that wouldn't create as much of a significant upgrade to the sewer treatment plant, would it, if it was reclaimed water going through and not, and not saltwater?
I'm hearing someone nod as if they know. Yeah, my understanding is that if you're running, you know, potable water that's wastewater, and you're treating it to levels, difficulty of bringing it to certain levels is not quite as great, but it's still pretty expensive.
And regardless, we're still going, no matter what our efforts, I think we're always going to have some level of intrusion here as well, just because of where we are.
Yeah, yes. Okay.
So the, if we were to consider one of the two options I mentioned, of indirect potable reuse or potable reuse, which is actually, you know, using our wastewater and probably sending it up to the reservoir to percolate back into the ground, that's something that is being done in pretty large scale in the Orange County Water District, and they're very renowned for that around the world, actually. And it's attempting to be done by San Diego County Water Authority, where they are trying to actually put it directly into one of their reservoirs that has imported water in it. And that is looking like that's going to happen as well. Now, one of the problems with this is that because of the stigma attached to it, right now, there are no specific regulatory requirements. Every, every application for this is a case-by-case basis. San Diego has been in the process for 20 years, even though I think the climate was much different when they started the process than it is now. Orange County Water District went faster. I do believe that it would be quicker for a groundwater recharge than putting it directly into a reservoir that then goes to, then goes into customers' homes. So, you know, there is a long potential process here. It is something that I think is very doable. It's a question of cost, it's a question of time and commitment. And of course, you know, I think with the groundwater piece, I don't know the community well enough to know, you know, and I think every community depends upon maybe how desperate you are or not, and whether it's okay or not, but in Orange County, there hasn't really been an issue. In San Diego, they've done incredible amounts of marketing to try to change people's minds and get them to get more comfortable with the idea, and they've seen some successes. So there's a little bit of that factor, and, you know, the whole kind of failed toilet-to-tap effort in the city of LA about 10 or 15 years ago has had kind of a hangover effect for years. So that's something to think about, but the state is pushing people, encouraging people to do this, and new regulatory requirements are due out in early 2015 or late 2014. So there'll be a much clearer landscape of what it is that would be required in order to do it once those come out. But again, going back to that, a lot of this is projecting out costs. Okay, this is what we, you just mentioned, Mayor, is the recycled water plumbing system, and that's something that I think is potentially doable. However, it's the, it's very doable. The question is whether you have the money for it and how much it costs, and it doesn't necessarily solve the issue of new water if you're using it just for wastewater purposes. Now, if you're going to use it for other purposes, and this indirect, indirect potable reuse, and of course, that again brings us back kind of to the Edison factor, is, you know, Edison would have to want to do that for us to have a joint project with them, or for us to encourage them to take, on their own initiative, to do it. Another option is expansion of existing D-SAL plant, which currently is owned and operated by Edison. The D-SAL outlook is a little more difficult than the recycled water in some ways. However, there is some, in general, support for D-SAL projects. I think, given the island's kind of unique situation and history of D-SAL, I think it would be looked on more favorably than developing a new site along the coast. However, there is, as this ocean plan is being amended, there would be a lot of mitigation that would be required. There's a lot of scrutiny. There's a lot of concern about the brine discharge, and it's not necessarily very clear exactly what all that would entail, meaning what you'd have to do if the city wanted to do it, what would be the gives, how much it would cost. I know that a company called Poseidon has developed D-SAL in Carlsbad, and that's operating at a fairly low level, but that has been something that went on for a long time. There's also one that is looking at being developed in, I think it's Huntington Beach, in Orange County, and that's running into a lot of local opposition, but they've moved that process along, and that, I think, ultimately might happen. But again, it's a long-term project, there's got to be dedication. It might make a lot of sense for the island, given the fact there's an existing plant. It could be easy to cost out, you know, what it would be to upgrade it. But again, as I mentioned before, at present, Edison owns and operates it, so that would involve Edison. Okay, so we've talked about how we, you know, what options for water there are, and as you can see from the presentation, a lot of those roll through Edison at this present time. And now, the other question is, what is the options for the city if the city were to want to have greater involvement in decision-making over the water system? So I think there are a few things, and I'm sure you've all thought of them before, but one of them is purchasing a water system for medicine. And of course, that's a cost issue and a financing. You know, the city does have the authority to provide water outside its city limits. However, it's, it's a little less clear than if it were all within the boundaries, but[1771.73] However, it's, it's a little less clear than if it were all within the boundaries, but there is some authority for that and precedent for that. And then, the question of, similar to cost, is pricing it out and seeing what it'd be for rates, and those are things which would need to be studied. And of course, you'd have to have a willing seller, and I know that they're currently in negotiations with another company that has been going on for a long time. But that is one option, we could purchase the system. Another option is condemnation, which, of course, the city has the power to do. There, you know, so the answer to the question there, can the city simply condemn, I think technically is yes. The city can condemn it, even though it does have property that's outside its city limits. However, because it does, there's slightly, I wouldn't say slightly, there's a significantly higher standard. There's a rebuttable presumption where we essentially would have to show that we could do a better job and make the case for why we should have to do it. And what I think that ultimately does is, it doesn't necessarily make it impossible. In fact, I think the city probably could condemn the system. It does drag the process out and make it a little more complicated, and probably a little more costly. And I think the important things to keep in mind, the condemnation, is that you still have to pay for it, so there's still the valuation, and then there's the process to get there.
Is there a chance to take the money from that grant, if we had the money from the grant, and put it into this program?
No, we wouldn't be able to use grant funds for the cost of purchasing the system or for financing condemnation. Most of the grant funds, unfortunately, we could, we could use some grant funds, to the extent that we could get them, for expansion of the D-SAL facility or something like that. The question is, can we get them? And I think we'd probably have a good chance, but there are some restrictions that come out as far as it's a 50% match. It's kind of, there's a lot of, you know, devil in the details, but I think there are some very good categories for a lot of our projects that we could competitively apply for. But can we take them to the bank? Unfortunately, not, which is, but I think, I think we'd probably get some money, but whether we can plan on that and forecast it and do financials on it is a different story. There's some issue that I wanted to mention here with Corix, and there, you know, I've been thinking about whether there's some interference with contract issue or not. I'm not sure if that's an issue or not, just something to keep in mind if we were to go a route like this, to see if that would be something that we might want to explore in more detail.
And just to elaborate on that, what he's alluding to is the fact that Edison and Corix are engaged in exclusive negotiations. Corix has invested a significant amount of time, effort, and money in this process, and the argument could be made that if the city, knowing that, entered into the fray and decided to try to condemn, there's the possibility, and he's just trying to present all potential risks, that they could say, hey, wait a minute, you know, you've caused damages to us, and we would now like to recoup those. That's all we're saying.
Yeah, and I think that is not necessarily a strong case, but it's a possibility and something to consider. Okay, so that was city condemnation, and of course, at the end of this, answer whatever questions like, or now. And then, another option for the city to have, or for the residents of the island specifically to have more control is the formation of the Community Services District. So, Councilman Sampson?
It seems like, yeah, it seems like Edison is partial to Corix, and they're impartial to the city, because we haven't heard any negotiations whatsoever from Edison reaching out to the city and asking us if we'd be, like to be part of this program, or like to be part of a process which we would take over the water right, so...
Well, if I could on that topic, just to go back a little bit in history on this one. So, at the time that Edison initially was interested in selling the system, this was approximately five years ago, they did invite bids and solicit input, and they received some interest from a number of different water purveyors who came over to tour the system. And then, they narrowed it down to a couple. I think they first narrowed it down, I think it was Cal Water initially, that fell through, and then they, then went with Corix. They, I just, just because I, at this time, I happened to be working for Edison, so I remember what was going on with this.
Right.
There, the island consortium was given the opportunity, I do recall, to make an offer as well, and the city was part of the island consortium. So, it was possible at one time, but then after the consortium declined to officially submit a proposal, I think there was also money involved, from what I recall, there was some good faith money that was required as part of that. Edison then moved to exclusive negotiations with Corix, which then locked up the process.
Okay, what kind of money are we talking about that could be at stake here? I mean, what is Corix, what is their, what is their...
This is a great question, so...
What is their input in this? Is it just attorney fees? Is that basically all it is? I mean, is that what they're recouping, if we've got involved in it at this point?
Well, there are a couple things. So, initially, it would be their sunk costs, is what I would call it. So, their time spent analyzing the system, they've actually had people that they have had on their payroll that have been stationed down here as kind of a early transition plan, if you will, so it's the cost of those folks. It's, you know, their legal fees, like you were suggesting in drafting the agreement, all those things combined, potentially.
Would it help our situation at all if we petition Edison at this point and let them know that we are interested in, in...
I think at this point, probably, and we'll probably get a little further, I might be jumping ahead here, Joe, so I apologize, but what the logical progression would be is if the council decides that that's, you know, what we want to pursue, the process would be, first of all, the general rate case for the water has to first of all be decided. That's still, the same general rate case that's been pending for five years has to be determined by the PUC. And that's important because in that rate case, the CPUC will determine the value of the water assets. And so, initially, when Edison was wanting to sell the system, I seem to recall, the determined value was around $30 million, I seem to remember. It has precipitated south since that time, and I think it's probably closer to somewhere south of $20 million at the current moment. And as part of that rate case, it could end up being somewhere between 10 and 20 million dollars. So, everyone's kind of waiting to see what happens in the rate case, whether or not Edison will be allowed to spread the costs of the water infrastructure over the electric rate payers, service territory wide, because that's a significant amount of money. And if they're not allowed to do that, then that's, that leaves a couple options. Either you have to come back and recoup that from the rate payers here on the island, or they have to pay that out of shareholder monies, which obviously they would be reluctant to do, or some combination of the two. So, then, once the rate case gets decided, then, what would happen next is what's called an 851 filing. And that is where Edison would go before the CPUC, trying to divest itself of its water and gas assets, because it's not just the water they're looking to sell, it's also the gas. And those water and gas assets were purchased by the rate payers within the Edison service territory. So, the, one of the responsibilities of the CPUC is to try to make sure the rate payers remain whole. So, that's why when people ask, you know, well, couldn't, you know, Edison just give the system away, or this or that? Well, they're going to have a hard time doing something like that, because the CPUC is going to always want to see that those rate payers are paid in, get a return on their investment. But going back to this, so there's a whole proceeding where Edison would come forward and say, okay, we'd like to divest ourselves of these water and gas assets. We've entered into an exclusive negotiation with Corix. We think they're well-suited to do this. Here's why. And we submit this to you, CPUC, to consider. At that point, a protestant like the island consortium could come forward and say, and likely will, hey, I think that, you know, we're, we're a candidate for the sale, even though we're not in a negotiation with Edison. We think that the CPUC should consider us as a potential suitor for this, because, you know, we represent the people of the island, and, you know, we want to control the water, and we'll be good stewards of this natural resource and so forth. So, it's within that 851 process that the city, or the island consortium, or some variant of that, would have to insert itself and then make a move, if you will.
Thank you for making that clear, Ben.
Sorry, just to swim, swim through that one, but that's...
That's all right. Thanks for letting me interrupt. I appreciate it.
No, no, it's very, very helpful. Okay, so, following up on what Ben was saying there, when you mentioned Community Services District, so one is, as I said, purchased by the city, condemnation by the city. Another option would be establishing a Community Services District. We do a lot of work with CSDs and formation, and there's a process by which you can set up a special district, and they are empowered under their act, Community Services District law, to provide water, wastewater service, a variety of other services. Formation can be done in two ways, by city resolution, essentially an application to LAFCO, or it could be by petition of the voters, 25%. And part of that application is to submit a little plan to LAFCO as to how the whole CSD is going to operate and run. There's a hearing approval process at LAFCO, post-approval protest hearings, similar to Prop 218 hearing, and then voter approval is ultimately required. The timing on creation of a CSD is about 12 to 24 months. And the issues, important points to keep in mind, the CSD is that it has all the powers that we would want it to have for purposes of providing the services, including the power of eminent domain, financing, powered issue bonds, et cetera. One of the issues, though, for the city's consideration is that CSDs are separate special districts, that are, they have election procedures in them, and they would ultimately be run by a board. And it's not the kind of thing where we could say, two members from the city council and two members of that, the CSD Services District law essentially maps out, you know, what you have to do. And that's five board directors. You can increase it under certain circumstances, elected by everyone who's in the service area. The service area that would make the most sense for this case would be the entire island. So, folks on the island would have an opportunity to run for certain seats, and then ultimately, the CSD would be the provider, but it would be, you know, subject to, you know, the democratic process in the same way the city is. Okay, another option, which I know was explored in some depth about four years ago, is a joint powers agreement. Now, a joint powers agreement is essentially a agreement between at least two public entities, where you're then entitled to exercise powers that you have in common. The city, of course, has very, very broad powers to do virtually everything. The difficult thing for us here is who's the second public entity. There was some analysis done recently by a prior firm that talked about a mutual water company potentially being that second agency. I think that's maybe doable. A mutual water company would be composed of the city and some of the other interests that are represented in the consortium, but quite, I think, difficult to do. And not necessarily the types of powers, a little more limitation on powers under a JPA unless you have that kind of solid second public agency. So, it could be something worth exploring, but my impression is that it was explored fairly in detail a number of years ago, and that it kept coming up to that stumbling block of, you know, are the powers of what you would need to create a mutual water company extensive enough to allow you to operate it how you want to operate it? But that is something where, under a JPA, it's essentially an agreement, and agreement to form a new entity that's composed of those agencies. Again, I have this last side with, you know, Edison-City agreements, and I have that kind of as an option as well, meaning, you know, we can work out some kind of arrangement with Edison along the lines of a purchase, along the lines of, you know, a variety of other different things that we would, you know, not sure what those options really are, actually. I mean, there's, other than the JPA, Community Services District, condemnation, and purchasing, I'm not sure about an MOU to operate the system, and would have to, you know, see how the PUC would treat something like that. But there is some potential for some kind of creative agreement. Okay, so in conclusion, and obviously, I'd open up to as many questions as you like, you know, this is kind of the way I've simplified it, is that the water-related solutions are, one is, you know, collaborate with Edison, and two is some kind of ownership of the system, purchase, condemnation. And then, the last second bullet there that Ben had touched upon is what the island consortium may want to do during the PUC process. Then, how that, the consortium would structure itself if that was a purchase, would probably be similar to what we've discussed. I think the Community Services District law is probably the cleanest and easiest for involving the multiple parties, but obviously, we're happy to, you know, go a path that the city wants to go and explore in all of them in more detail. So, with that, I would, yeah, any questions, I'm happy to try and answer.
Thanks, Joe. And I think, you know, kind of, if you heard a reoccurring theme, I think it's, you know, all roads kind of point to either cooperating and figuring out a way to get along, or taking it over. I mean, really, all these other efforts, I mean, they're terrific, and then that's, and they're noble on their own, but really, they require one of those two things in order for us to move forward. And so, that's kind of what I wanted us to get to tonight, was that understanding that if this is going to be our focus, then we just need to understand that that's what it has to be, and that should be the direction, because it will lead to these other areas of interest on the road.
Sure. Oh, wait, you have a question?
What's LAFCO looking for?
I'm sorry, what's that?
What's LAFCO going to look for in a CSD or something?
What's left of...
LAFCO, the local agency of formation community.
Yeah, what is, what is their role?
What are they looking for?
Um, I, it'd be very odd for them to refuse to protest and not approve a creation of a CSD.
But it's just under their purview. It's just like, it's like, as if you were unincorporated and wanted to form a municipality. It's just, it's one of the requirements that has to go before LAFCO. It's just the checklist.
It's pretty procedural, yeah. As long as you've got your plan and how you're going to fund yourself and all that kind of stuff, which...
We could call Ken Lee and ask him for specifics, since he now works for LAFCO.
Yeah, and I...
We're not really sure what they do, but that's, that's one of the things allegedly that they do do, so...
Yeah. I think we're actually the general counsel for like three LAFCOs in different areas, so it's something that is very familiar with.
And can the CSD issue revenue bonds in advance of the purchase?
Uh, good question. I would say no. It would have to wait until it's created.
Right, and that's not, okay, so that's the challenge you're bringing up, is that you don't have a history, right? In other words, for investors to determine your worthiness and so forth? Is that what you're, you know...
Well, I mean, we have the history. We have...
But not as a CSD.
Not as a CSD.
Right. I would agree.
And if you went the CSD route, you could finance a purchase, or you could go the condemnation route. Obviously, to the extent that Edison is a willing seller, the better. And I don't know the details of their agreement and the exclusivity of it, and when that expires, or what it's contingent upon, or what. But the CSD, once created, would have a variety of options. But again, the main issue would be funding and how you generate that revenue.
After the, assuming the bond water, the bond, water bond goes through in November, how long does it take them to get their act together, to define everything, before they say, and now, the funds are available?
Well, for the California Water Commission, we're going to be accepting applications next year for funding in 2016. So, I think most, there still are a variety of pots of money that are available from, leftover from Prop 84, not a ton, and it's starting to run out. That's why there was such a big push for this water pond. So, there still are some funding options that are available right now for us, that maybe aren't as exhaustive as they are if the bond were to pass. But I would guess most of that money would start to move in 2016. Some of it maybe a little bit earlier. There's obviously so much attention being played to it. In fact, there was legislation earlier in the year that passed that accelerated some of the existing bond money being put out for folks to help with the drought. And I could see that happening again. I think there's, there's a lot of pressure on the Department of Water Resources to move water out to people quickly, I mean, money out to people quickly for water projects, but unfortunately, I think it still would take, you know, six months to a year.
Could you, with the existing money there, could you do a phase one, phase two of a project? You know, use some of the money that's still left over, if we could get it, and then when the new money comes out, say, and this is phase two?
Uh, I think you potentially could. I think it would be something where, and this is, you know, in my discussions with the department over the integrated regional water management groups and how we're not part of a region, I've essentially said, well, what do we do? What are the pots of money that we can get and for what? So, we're kind of going through that process, and I think what I would recommend would be talking to DUDR and essentially saying, here are what our projects are. Here's what we would like to do. You know, this is how we see them fitting within the existing bond money and the future bond money. You know, what are your thoughts? And they'll, you know, of course, they're not going to give you everything, but I think you can get a pretty decent idea of where you fit it.
But again, it's important to recognize that in doing that, you'd have to do so with Edison, right? Because they, so that's the...
So, we're not ready right now, anyway.
So, we'd have to come up and have the idea, have Edison agree that it's a good idea, and that we're going to go jointly together for it. So, that's one of the important things I want us to keep our eyes wide open on, is that...
But if we wanted to go the reclaimed system, we could do that on our own.
Okay, there's some city, there's some money out there for city projects that are not direct water, potable water supply projects that potentially could have funding. I'm not exactly sure how big the pot is that's available for, let's say, you know, upgrading your treatment plant, but, you know, that's something that we can explore in more detail.
One of the arguments is, is if we did have reclaimed water system, all the ag water that is used commercially and privately would be, not be used from freshwater, it would be used from reclaimed water, so that would help the freshwater potable source over here. There is somewhere between 75 and 100 acre feet of water that we put on plants as opposed to putting in glasses.
Yeah, and that's a significant amount of water, given the total water use on the island, and that's... island, and that's something that a lot of water districts and cities are trying to do. The outdoor use is really the killer. If you can transition that, you can save a lot of water.
Questions from the audience or comments?
Yeah, please.
Come on up, Harry.
I don't know how formal this is.
It's pretty informal, I think.
Harry Peterson, 120 Hill Street. Hey, Joe.
Yes.
Can you share with the council? I come from Inyo County, forty years in-
Yeah.
The eastern Sierras and I'm sort of familiar with water and DWP and water rights being transferred from DWP to local cities. And it was disastrous. I mean, the transfer of those obligations and management of those systems was, has never gone well. They were really expensive to operate. They were always short of funds. The quality of service and water has gone down. Can you offer the council some advice on that?
Yeah, I'm not sure which cities in Inyo County took over. Transfer, I mean, of course, I'm familiar with L A W P, but the city took over from some public utilities and, or certain cities-
Yeah, pretty much. All the small communities, all the way up the valley was part of the MOU for the Lower Owens River Water Project. It was some of the conditions. So the little places like Independence and Lone Pine and Big Pine and the City of Bishop, the establishment of the Mammoth Community Water District was part of that water agreement when they lost the 75,000 acre feet that went into Mono Lake, et cetera. And essentially, that was the only real water company that was ever successful was the Mammoth Community, but that was all pretty much financed by developers. And they sort of, you know, kept their money and developed and incorporated the sewer treatment plant and now a big solar project, et cetera. But given all that, I mean, what I kind of hear the council and what we're exploring as a community is to try and buy a water system that is having trouble providing and it has a lack of capital and we're looking at avenues or resources and you're kind of explaining where those avenues and resources might be to provide capital so that we could purchase a water system? Is that what we're here doing? I'm sorry, I'm just looking at the thing and listening, I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, we're just, we're trying to, one of the things that we've been interested in discussing is, you know, what, what would a potential next step be in trying to better control the water on the island and how, how would you go about doing that and what's involved and so forth, you know? Trying to chase down certain things to address the fact that it all comes down to who owns the water rights.
Yeah, and it all, it all does, Harry, come down to cost as well. And that's why, you know, these are options presented for, as Ben indicated, more control over the system without the projections of what it would be to cost, what it would be impact to ratepayers. I know some very good examples, I mean, Golden State Water Company, Caliham, a lot of them do great jobs, provide great service. And I know a lot of public entities that provide in cities included, great service. Currently, there's a similar, you know, the City of Claremont is actually condemning some of Golden State Water Project's system because they've been unhappy with the system in the area and the provision of services. I think Golden State is disputing that and I think, you know, it really depends upon the area and the financing, the tax base, a lot of those things to determine and I, you know, wouldn't, I'd hate to hedge it for you, but I'm not sure that you can really classify it as always better to be private or always better to be public. I think it depends upon the circumstances. But I do know that that's the most, you know, water history-rich area in the state as far as controversy goes, so I'm not surprised with all of the history with Owens Valley and LA and all that.
Yeah, long history, for sure.
Yeah, very, very interesting one, too.
Question is, this whole, the whole notion of creating a City of Avalon or City Water District. I've heard, not only, I've heard several of the council people refer to the water as "our" water. And what I'm wondering is, what is the idea, just to create one water district that's separate from the rest of the island? Or is it, would it be inclusive of the rest of the island?
I think, I think the only way you could really propose that would, it would have to be island-wide. Creating several separate community service districts would be very difficult and complicated and not to mention you'd have a horrible time with some very, very small ratepayer bases it would result.
And that's the history.
Yes.
Here we have a company, a major company that's got a tremendous amount of financial resources available to it. They're trying to sell the water system. They've been trying to sell it for quite some time now. And so I guess where I'm coming from is how would the city really, I mean, I do see some sense in the notion that maybe there's other funds out there. But those, those, those funds are not always available. That's what we found out. Sewage treatment plant was a wonderful example of that. We were, it was mandated that we build it, but then when it came to financial shortfalls, the money wasn't always there to help solve the problems. And so it's a, it's a grand idea, but how would you, in other words, if, okay, number one, it would only be one district and the city would accept the fact that other places on Catalina Island are also, they have access to that water also. They have a right to that access. And it, there's some interesting background history someplace that the conservancy has a, quite a volume of books. And they were all done on the issues that may develop as the conservancy and the City of Avalon and the Island Company progressed on the whole notion of the conservancy. And one of them happened to be, they brought in water experts and someplace there's a volume that looked in depth at water conflicts. And we're beginning to see that, this isn't the first time, we've had other droughts, but we're seeing a more intense, I think, you know, head-to-head with camps, the conservancy and others, whose water is it? And so anyhow, I, I, I have, I don't, I would look obviously very carefully, very carefully, at the whole notion of creating a separate water district when you already have a large company that's having difficulty in running this big company and want to get rid of it. They might cut you a good deal just to get it out of their grotte.
I don't know, they're in the audience, maybe they can speak to that.
Is there any, Mr. Byrne, is there any difference between distribution rights, water rights and just water? Who owns the water? Do you own the water, if you own the water rights? Is that what that means?
Yeah, you do, basically. I mean, it's, it's not quite exactly like a property right because it's based on use, but yeah, Edison has the water rights and Edison is entitled to provide the water to the residents of the city. So by virtue of use by city residents, there's no obtaining of any water right.
They're, they're entitled to, but they're also responsible to provide that, correct?
Correct, yeah. Just like we would be if we were the providers of water. And how it, what it costs and how they do that is part of the PUC process. But yes, they are the owners of the water rights and they're the owners of the infrastructure as well. And to the gentleman's point, it is important to note that, you know, bond money would not be able to use, I would almost guarantee it, for purchase of the system.
So depending on, on what, what the, what condition the system is in when the waters, when the water rights are purchased, that's all you're really paying for because they can't take the water with them if they go, so the water's going to stay here. The only thing that's going to, the only thing that, that can be improved on the water is the system itself. Delivering it to the people and storage and reclamation and how the water gets to the storage areas, how we actually take care of the aquifers.
I assume whoever, whoever buys it, whether it be the company that's in negotiations now or city, it would be a purchase of the assets, all the infrastructure-
Okay.
-and the water rights and whatever upgrades would be the responsibility of the purchaser.
What I'm, what I'd like to ask you is, in the, in the page, it says, "Options for additional water sources." It says Edison plans to build, are these facts here? It says Edison plans to build a deep well and then it said Edison would build, own and operate. Okay, so that doesn't, that isn't exactly true because after speaking to somebody that, from the Island Company, the Island Company is going to put up the money for this and in return, they get a certain percentage of the water that comes out of that well. They're, they are entitled to it if they, if Edison builds this well and if they get the water. And if they don't get as much as they were planning on getting, then this company, the Island Company, gets all the water, if it's like less than 50 acre feet. So I think there's some things that we definitely need to investigate here. If they start building this deep well, we need to understand, if we can't own the water, why can the Island Company own it? Or why can they get, why can't they get an entitlement to it?
I can speak a little bit to that. So I think all we were trying to say on this slide was that even if you front the money, as, as you're mentioning, council member, that the Island Company is doing in this instance, even if you front the money, you are still not controlling and operating the well. And you're, you're right by, they're, they're entering into a covenant with Edison such, just as you pointed out, that they are going to be entitled to a certain portion of that. But the city would also be entitled to a certain portion of that water as well.
Unless it's under 50 acre feet, then they get it all.
Well, and I've not heard that or seen that and I would, that, I don't know, I mean, I'm not suggesting that you're incorrect, but that's not been explained to me.
If we do take over the water, do we still have to honor this contract if they have? That's something that we need to keep an eye on to, through this process.
The whole effort is overseen by, by regulators and that's an interesting point that you bring up. In the transfer, the sale, what, I would suspect, because it's a covenant that's been blessed by regulators, that it would probably be required to proceed. That would be my gut, but a good question to ask.
Yeah, because I know the Island Company, they're smart business people and they're going to protect their investment with vigor. So, so we have to also protect what, what the people of Avalon want us to protect, which is right now, like Rudy pointed out, this is a potential water wars what we're going up against. But I'd rather look at it as like, we're trying to work this out as a community and we don't want to get into food fights or water wars or things like that. We just, we want to do this correctly and efficiently and affordably, you know?
The last thing that I would add and that I suspect on this topic as well is that once a covenant is reached, because the CPUC would be reviewing and approving that document, it would be a public record. And then we could therefore review it and be privy to all the terms.
Thank you for that.
Good question.
Does the audience have any comments or questions or? Yes, Rudy.
Sorry, what more?
Please.
Rudy Pilch, 346 Last Moments. I think there's a history to these water allocations that occurred many years ago and that the first major one was really with the, 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 Hamilton Cove Project, Balboa Day Club, when they proposed that. But the city had a rule that at that time, because we were in a drought situation then too, or we were approaching one. But the notion was that any new development had to augment the water supply consistent with what they estimated there needs to be. And that's how the desal plant came to be. They, the Hamilton Cove Project, they looked for a variety of water locations. The Edison Company, in fact, pointed them in the right direction. First, let's look for natural supplies. Weren't to be had. And so the final fallback was that the, the project proposed to build, or they would, they would provide the capital cost for the desal plant. But the Edison Company took the responsibility, accepted the responsibility for the, the cost of operation and maintenance of that facility. And the interesting thing in today's world would be to see, has, is that plant operating at its capacity? Has it consistently been putting water back into the public system, consistent with their requirement and their agreement? And are we consistently asking every new project to augment the water supply? And I don't, there was a variety of ways of doing it, either financially or physically going out and finding and developing new water sources or contributing to the, the continued escalation in size of the desal plant.
I don't know if I could respond, I mean, Ben can chime in. It seems that the new water supply things has, even though it may be an issue, seems to not be an issue because Edison says, "Okay, you're taking money from this project to put it into this project," so you don't, it's sort of like the water's already existing, you know? But that's the game that's been played, I believe. So, you know, you take water from those Cox Nursery and you take it from Vons, the old Vons, well, that's enough for the new Vons and you, you know, you do this, do this, there's enough water for the new spa. I mean, those are the, that's the shell game that's played. And so then when you're now, you're looking at new sources of water. Go ahead, Rudy. We just got to, we got to-
Get this thing lively.
Let's make it more lively. Who's monitoring the shell game?
Sorry?
Who's monitoring the shell game?
Well, I think this, this brings the bigger point, which is, you know, in this development process, Edison controls this piece of it and the city does not. So the city could certainly approve conditionally a project, but without the water, we don't have that authority. Edison ultimately, at this time, has that authority to what you're speaking, to address whether there's adequate water available for what's being proposed.
But if there is, I sense there's a distrust between the city and the Edison Company.
Well, it's, it's a little bit disjointed, right? Because the city, you know, traditionally, a city would have the authority to grant this type of approval, but we're, we're missing this key component and so it's, it's a goofy relationship.
Not entirely. The city, the city still has some control.
We do.
They don't have to give a development permit-
No, that's absolutely correct.
-unless they have an absolute assurance of a water supply.
That's true, that's true.
And so if, if the desal plant isn't producing what it's supposed to be doing in behalf of not only the, the, this cancel beach project, but, I mean, the, the Hamilton Cove Project, but if they haven't been continuing to maintain that facility and produce the capacity that that plant has capability of, the city has some authority there.
No, you're, you're absolutely right. The city can certainly deny any development proposal. Absolutely right.
In answer to your other question about upkeep of, the desal plant was shut down four to five years, too, after that was done.
That was well-publicized.
Yep, that was very well-publicized.
That's what I'm getting at, too.
Exactly.
If that, if that unit, you know, produces something like, what is it, 300,000 gallons a day? It's not quite an acre foot, but it still produces enough to help maintain the community. And if it's not putting that water back into the system, then what action would the city take or could they take in order to make that happen? And assure that what it's producing, there used to be a, what is it, Montgomery Company or something that was quite an expert? And the idea of, of bringing in somebody that can actually monitor what's happening with the desal plant, just as, that's only a portion of it. That's not going to be our only solution in life.
No, I agree.
Oh, wait, were you going to say something?
It's just, part of it also just comes down to basic dollars. Edison has said that it costs four or five times as much to produce desal water as rainwater from Middle, Middle Canyon. So if they run that plant 24/7, 365 and the reservoir's filling, we, we, the ratepayers, as you recall, we've had two fairly significant rate increases, are paying nothing. There's, the City of Avalon and the Island of Catalina gets to pay for our water. We have nobody we can pawn the costs onto. And so the company's $2 million well that they're putting in, if we, the ratepayers, wanted Edison to put it in, they'd put it in, they'd add the $2 million to the rate base, we'd pay $170,000 additional profits to Edison. It, it comes down to the economics of it and we've got to make sure that the- And we've got to make sure that it's running as efficiently as possible, just not blindly running the sucker. One thing I would suggest is that when they do decide to overhaul it, have a party before you take off wine, but that's something else.
Well, I appreciate that explanation. But I think still, the Edison Company accepted a responsibility to operate and maintain that facility. And if somebody is not monitoring the pot of gold there, they can tell you anything.
In which they have.
They have, yeah, and they have.
Well, that's what I'm trying to emphasize here is that maybe the city needs to do something to monitor what's happening with Edison Company more closely. If there really is this suspicion that Edison is not doing what they're supposed to be doing, then I think that has to, that has to occur. What if they drill another well? And do we know, I mean, will the city be monitoring in any fashion how much water is coming out of that well? How much is gonna be, goes to the Island company? How much goes to the rest of the community?
I don't think we can.
I mean, when the well goes dry, then we're dead.
Exactly. Good point. And one thing everybody's forgetting, we still need rain, regardless of how many wells you drill.
We can hope as much as we want to drain, but we have to live in the here and now.
I agree, I agree, Rudy. I'm with you on that.
The answer to your question is no, we don't know how much water that well's gonna produce. We don't even know if it's gonna reproduce what we needed or what's projected to produce, what it's projected to produce, which is 250 acre feet per year, which is what I've been told, which gives us 125 acre feet. And that's if we run the thing dry every year. And we don't want to run our wells dry. I don't, that's what we did at the West End right now. So we're in a predicament and we gotta, what's more important is to make, for us as a city, to make projections of when we build or we take over our water system, how big do we want our city to grow? Because we don't want to say no to all these projects. We want to say yes, this is how much water we're going to sell you, and we have that much. And, you know, we need to know. Are we gonna be able to accommodate 10,000 people in our city? 7,000? Because that question hasn't been asked. So the end game is...
The question has been asked many, many times. It hasn't been answered.
Thank you for correcting me there. And I stand corrected, absolutely. So when we do decide to either take over this water system or build a new desal system, and build ourselves a, or that is revamp the desalinization system and build a system where we can recycle our water, and then we will have our aquifers and our top water storage areas for an emergency when we need it. Of course, water's not gonna be cheaper. Nothing's gonna go down in price. It could essentially, once we get it online and we run it correctly and efficiently, we could, we could have water that's the same or even less money for sale. But we will have our emergency, what do we call it here? It's an emergency system in place. So if we, it doesn't rain for five years, we're gonna have our top water storage and our wells are gonna be charged, because we're not gonna drain them dry like we're doing right now. And so, these are all questions...
Shouldn't that have been done over the last five years or 10 years? Shouldn't that have been done by Edison if their water manager is advising us on how much...
We can certainly make the case that the water has, that the water system has been mismanaged, obviously. But I can also say that they've probably done the best they can do. And that's not saying that they haven't done anything. They've done the best they can do, but it's still mismanagement. I agree with you.
Well, the desal plant is a very modular system. That was explained in great detail when they put it in and subsequently at later times. And it can grow incrementally. Now, I understand you're the water expert from, well, legal water expert, is that it?
Not expert in everything water, but legal water.
Well, I mean, I'd say for instance, looking at the water situation that we have now, why couldn't some of that money, I didn't hear this coming out of anybody, but why couldn't that money be used for just expanding the existing desal system?
Potentially could be. But at this point, it would need to be an application by Edison for the funds in order to do it. Or it could be a co-application by the city and Edison to the state. And we'd have to identify the pot of money that's currently existing. If the bond passes in November, there's gonna be a big pot of money potentially for, not for 100% of a project, but for some portion of the project. But it's still a competitive process, it's still not a guarantee, as you've mentioned. But there's money available for those kinds of purposes.
Let's say for instance, I understand the Island Company is putting in some money for exploring additional wells. Why couldn't that money be put into, why couldn't that money be put into expanding the desal plant? And I understand the economics, that was known from day one. It costs more to run the desal plant from a utility standpoint than it does from the pumping water all the way from Middle Ranch to Avalon.
Right. Well, I think it clearly could be something that, but again, it would need to be something that Edison is putting forward. And I'm not saying that they, I'm not saying that there are, you know, a plethora of opportunities that they've passed on in the past. And I don't think getting a grant money is that easy. And it's not necessarily, I'm not familiar with the desal money that is currently in existence. I know there has been some, but the bond that is coming up clearly has a lot of money in it. So I wouldn't want to speak out of turn and criticize them for not going out for money that's available, because there may not have been, but there will be. But again, unless there was a different structure, it would be an Edison decision to make or not. But we could, yeah, I'm not familiar with, Ben had told me a little bit about the land consortium and potentially funding the well. And some kind of arrangement is possible, but in the context, as you mentioned, of the PUC and whether they, you know, how they allow that or not, and what conditions could they take at the expense of other rate payers?
I don't remember the relationship between the city and the PUC at the time that the Hamilton Cove development was created. It was the very first project on Catalina that went through the Coastal Commission, though that I better remember. But very clearly, the water issue was a big issue at that time. And they looked extensively for, you know, alternate supplies, less expensive than a desal plant. And finally, came to terms on the desal plant because that was effectively the only option that they saw as being, you know, possible and doable. And it's a very modular system and could be expanded. Maybe each one of these developers could just augment the cost of expanding that plant. Might be less painful and maybe even better than going out and taking water out of the interior there.
Can Edison apply for some of this bond money?
You know, technically, as a PUC entity, they can. I think the application would be, so yes, the answer's yes. It would probably be helpful if the city were a co-applicant.
It would be easier for them, possibly.
Well, I think the state is looking at regional projects. And this whole, Erwim I mentioned is a region of entities that are coming forward, presenting projects that are good for the region. So if the city were on board and the consortium were on board, then I think that would make a stronger case.
Leslie Horner, 306 Whitley. Whether you create your own water district or Edison continues to provide the water service, assuming they drill the well, assuming Island Company and Mike Flynn get their allocations, is there a way legally for the city to block any further development even until you see how this well produces? Until you see how the infrastructure of the town could even withstand another 100 or 200 homes in the city? Because it's not just the water, in my opinion. We have the sewer treatment plant, we have the dump, we have the roads, et cetera. So I'm just wondering if legally, even though they say, yep, we've got lots of water now, folks, can you say, there's a building moratorium right now until we figure this out? Because otherwise, they're just, it's my understanding that once we get to a certain point in our water availability, Edison can just go ahead and issue allocations. Also, it's my understanding that because those two parties are funding the drilling of the well, they are entitled to certain allocations. However, if you could block that building until you see that we really are ready for that, I'm just curious.
Now, that's called planning.
We've discussed the impact on all that in prior meetings, the infrastructure of the city.
Well, I guess the short answer to the question is yes, the city does control the development in town. And we are able to approve and deny developments as we see fit for and in the interest of the community and what we're able to provide.
I just want to say, I appreciate Leslie's comments. And when Rudy was speaking earlier, I was sort of formulating some thoughts. From my perspective, as a planning commissioner for six years, and perhaps erroneously, I would trust an allocation that was before me, saying that Edison has reviewed this, the fire department's reviewed this, everybody's sort of signed off. And so then, as a planning commissioner, you make your decision accordingly, thinking that all of these things have already been looked at. So now I'm seeing this from a different perspective, which is we don't have enough water to service the needs that we have right now. So, you know, perhaps looking at a building moratorium is very convoluted because there's a difference between expansion and further development versus replacement or repurposing a property, for example. So there's, you know, a whole lot to be thought of in terms of what do you say no to? And, you know, what can you allow? 150 homes at the golf course, probably not something we can do right now, but letting somebody tear down and rebuild their home is essentially just repurposing it. And then I just want to go on record and say that I am absolutely not convinced that this well is the answer. I would, you know, in my perfect world, would love to see that money that the Island Company is putting towards this well and the testing go into expanding the desal plant. And I will stand here and say, I've asked several times for information regarding this. These meetings are all closed door. You know, I don't know who is really present in having, Annie, you might be there for these meetings, but I can tell you that this council is not informed about the well, because I'm one of five, and nobody will talk to me about this well. So I'm not convinced it's the answer. And I'm, I'm an open, I'm available. I would like to know what all of this means. I'd like to know if it is a separate source of water or if it's the current source of water that we're pulling from and whether the straws are just going in different directions and eventually we're gonna use up the water. I mean, you know, I'm making an attempt to learn this, but I am not convinced that the well's the answer, so...
And I don't think we've gotten, we haven't even gotten those answers. It's like, oh, we've gotten, they've got the permits to do the test well and then Edison and Island Company were gonna meet a couple weeks ago to work out their agreement before Island Company was gonna put any money into the test well. We have not heard back, maybe somebody knows, or have not heard back on that as well.
And I did receive a report that I was, had requested from Edison. And I will be honest and say I've not had an opportunity to read said report yet, and I will. But I just don't, where's the hydrology that explains that this is not all pulling from the same sort of body of water? And are we gonna pull this quicker? And that's my concern with pushing forward and the city even having whatever seat at this table to push forward on these permits to test this well. I mean, if there's gonna be so many hundreds of gallons of water over a short period of time going out, you know, isn't that gonna reduce the amount of supply that we have available to us now?
I think just a couple important things on this. So number one, the mayor and I have been present at, I think, two or three meetings on this topic. And really, as the mayor alluded, it's been very preliminary. And the effort thus far has been to get a test permit. And that really is gonna where things stand. And as the mayor alluded, I think as recently as last week, the Island Company and Edison were working on their covenant together. So I think outside of that, there's not a whole lot to really report. The city, of course, does not control the property where the well is being drilled. That's important to understand. The city does not own the water rights. It's also important to understand. The property owner is the conservancy, they are at the table. They're asking a lot of the questions that you were asking and are looking for, I think, the same types of assurances that you've mentioned. And Edison, of course, controls the rights at that location. So those are all just important things. But I think that between the mayor and I, I mean, if there was a lot to share, I think we certainly would, but that's really, I think, what I'm aware of at this point.
And I'm certainly not suggesting that the two of you aren't sharing, so to speak. I'm, I guess I would like to know first and foremost, is that all the same water source? And I know I've asked that question a couple times. And whether or not there's an answer to that, there hasn't been one provided. So I'm worried that, and I appreciate that we don't control the water, we don't own the water. I understand that. I also appreciate that it's the conservancy's land and it's the Island Company's money if they want to put it into testing this. I understand all of that. But if it's the, first and foremost, is it the same water? And I don't know that anybody knows that.
What Edison has said, and I think, again, the conservancy's looking for some additional information, is that this is a, and again, I'm just representing what I heard in third person. Mayor, correct me if I get this wrong. This is, the proposal is for a deep water, that's the wrong term, a deep well into the bedrock aquifer, four to 500 feet below the surface. Their pedometer studies have shown that there is an underwater river, if you will, flowing in that area at a constant rate. Whether it's from the same aquifer, the alluvium aquifer closer to the surface that the existing wells drill from, or whether it's connected, I don't think anybody definitively really has come forward and said or knows. At least I have not heard that in the discussions.
So then my worry would be, if it is the same aquifer, again, you're just, you know, the two straws are gonna come together at some point. And we're just, if you, if they say the water runs at a certain, a certain number of gallons per minute or whatever, and it then says that there's this much water down there, we really don't know that. So then how do you, I guess my worry would be, how would Edison base how much water allocation it could then give?
So there have been projections on what it could yield. The conservancy has asked for certain, and again, I'm just representing what I heard in the meeting. The conservancy has asked for certain pedometer readings at certain points, if I'm remembering correctly, Mayor, to provide that type of information that you're asking about. The conservancy has suggested that, you know, there's a riparian area downstream from where the proposed well is sought to be drilled. And that riparian area is present year round. And so the conservancy has suggested that if the well, if the water taken from this well was simply equated to that amount which actually runs off into the ocean on its own, then in theory, the conservancy might be okay with that portion being taken. But they would want to know how much, in theory, could be running off into the ocean such that they didn't diminish or destroy that riparian area. And that's what John Mack has suggested in these meetings. I think that they're waiting to find out more.
And one of the reasons, the only one of the reasons I kind of feel comfortable is because John Mack is there. Because I, you know, Edison today can't really speak to it, but, because yeah, that's what we're all... That's what Joseph is really concerned about as well. I mean, totally, totally. So, and I guess they run the test well for two weeks, they get it, and that would get an idea. And so if something, I don't know what could happen in that two weeks, it would be disastrous or whatever. But, I mean, there's a possibility that then it doesn't happen at all. It's just a test.
And I guess a very basic question, is digging this well actually that much less expensive than just expanding the desal plant and providing additional storage?
One of the things with the desal plant is when they went to reactivate it six or seven years ago, they changed from testing the output water, testing the input water. So they were taking the water out from Planet Pebble Beach, and they, some, something showed up in the water, they couldn't use that water, so they had to drill a well out at the quarry. And they had to put the pipeline in from the quarry through that nice small road. And I'm not sure that that pipeline was that much oversized. So I'm not sure that there is, there's a source of salt water to put to the desal plant to increase the capacity a whole bunch, because I know that they wouldn't want to overbuild the pipeline too much. Also, they have, as I always fall back on, it's a discharge permit issue, which is how much salt they can... much salt they can, right, they could put back in the ocean. But, you know, we all, being sometimes a member of the conspiracy theory, we all talk about how much water this well's going to produce, why don't we just get our own independent hydrologists and go out there and have them check this stuff? And have our own expert look at the stuff? Because now we're depending upon Edison's and the company's and...
Good point.
But can we, is that something that we could do, even though it's not our, we would have to work in conjunction?
I think we could certainly convince the conservancy to allow something like that and we could probably talk to, you know, it's, it's been a very transparent discussion. I think that's a reasonable request and I don't see how Edison or the conservancy would be opposed to something like that. I'm happy to make that request.
It's a very, very good request.
Frankly, I don't know what the cost would be, so I'd want to first understand what type of amount of money we're talking about, so you guys could have your eyes wide open on that. But I would, I would certainly make the request and find out.
We haven't approved the budget yet.
I think people will trust some, an expert that is appointed by the city council over Edison or the island company, which that's who's overseeing it right now. And I do want to say, there is potential for drilling this, for drilling this well, this bedrock well, there is potential to possibly contaminate the entire underground water system. I know that's a fact. All this other stuff, it's all speculation. How? Environmental chemical pollutants, having possibly a diesel truck spill its gas right there. I know the conservancy has an outhouse about 150 yards from where they're, they're wanting to drill this well. Should I go on? Let's see, they spray chemicals up and down those canyons. There's a boneyard up there that has a lot of, up in Skull Canyon, which is upstream from where we're, we're talking about drilling this well. There's a lot of vehicles that are just sitting in the dirt, possibly, you know, possibly leaking contaminants into the soil. So that's how accidents happen and we got to make sure that all of our bases are covered when these wells are drilled. And I like Ollie's idea, Ollie's idea about having our own expert oversee this because, personally, I don't trust Edison and I don't trust the island company at this point because they're both desperate to find water and they'll do anything to find it. I, I don't know if anybody's aware, but they're, but they're drilling a new well at the west end right now. Okay? So we're already down below sea level down, out there. So now we're going to drill well below sea level and that could possibly disturb that entire well system out there. So, and these are people that are desperate, they want water, they need water, they need to keep their businesses open and up and running and they'll do anything right now to find that water. And that's why we got to, as a city, step in and, and make it right and do it the correct way. And not out of desperation, but out of negotiations, out of finding experts, putting to the task, getting our expert here from Best Best and Krieger, having them represent us in the best way possible and, and coming to a logical conclusion. And there's a lot of things that we have to think about, but I think we put up most of them on the table tonight. And I like your input on that last, this last go around there, Councilman Cassidy, that was very good. And everybody's input for that matter, this is, this is really important to us right now. Thank you for contributing your information and your logic and your, and your knowledge.
In terms of solutions that don't involve Edison, Ben, it appears that, because we've got that little, we've got a reclamation committee, I don't mean little, we've got some really awesome people from Avalon and some of them are in the audience today, I'm very excited. The recycled plumbing water system and the recycled wastewater system is something that could be done and really does not, unless if you ever want to come out and talk too, because he's a great man as well, that doesn't involve Edison much or at all?
Replacing the saltwater system with a recycled water system would, would not. It just involves capital.
And water.
And, and some water, yes.
Right.
So one of the worries that I have is if we use, if we do that and we go to this tertiary treated water in our, throughout our infrastructure and there is however many acre feet a year that we no longer use, would Edison then be able to come back and recoup costs?
Yep.
So will, the ratepayers will ultimately be affected by this even if we move, yeah?
Well, this water, this water eventually will get into the freshwater system.
No, but what happens?
No, I'm saying we'd be using less water.
They're selling less water, their costs don't go down that much. They're going to increase the rates to cover the cost of the operation of the smaller sale. It's like the...
Like they're going to do now.
It's like they're going to do pretty soon.
Yeah, after this.
It might be.
No, it's stated they're going to do that.
I mean, I definitely want to think about that too, because we're looking at impacting, I mean, we're looking at doing something really great, but also impacting our rates as well.
Well, anything we do is going to, if, if we do D-SAL, it's going to impact them because it's four times as much to operate. So I mean, either way, we're screwed.
Who rates the tariffs?
Of course, in 86, D-SAL was the same cost as reservoir water.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was in the islander.
And the tariffs are written by?
Yeah, but yeah. And could fairy come by with the tooth?
You know, I might want to add one thing on the recycled water. So I agree on the wastewater side that the city has the ability to do things independent of Edison, but we could run into problems if we were to provide recycled water for purposes that Edison is already providing water to with that duplication of service act in law. So if we were then going to replace water that Edison was already providing to certain folks for outdoor use, that would be a problem and something that would need to be discussed with them and agreed to by them.
Fortunately, we're not, we're all not too heavily landscaped in comparison to the mainland if they, the water districts over there, I would imagine.
The water they sell never makes a, so it's a significant impact on Edison.
Yeah.
The leakage in for the...
Right. Well, from here, this is refreshing. Go ahead, Rudy, come on up.
Pleased to.
Thank you, Rudy Pilch, 346 Las Lomas. Has the city made any strong commitments, and Cindy probably knows this better than anybody else, she's on the planning commission, but has the city made any development commitments to anybody else besides the island company?
City has made any development yet?
Not to my knowledge.
I guess what I'm, where I'm going with this thought is that really the city has the authority to control the amount of development that goes on in Avalon.
Absolutely.
That's what our whole planning process is about.
Right.
And Cindy just explained some of that. And so it doesn't matter whether they find water or not, if the city understands what their ultimate capacity is, and the city really does have finite limits. I mean, not just the land space, but infrastructure and everything else. And we've heard comments about this all the way down the line. So the city's strong arm is planning permits.
Right.
So what has the submitted, what has the city committed to as of this date, as it relates to, say, the, the island company's future development or anybody's future?
We, and I could speak to that. There, there, you know, outside of those in-flight projects that you see around town and, you know, the remodels that we spoke to, there, there's been some discussions between the city and the island company about future development. And where they stand is we have a long list of questions which haven't been answered. There's been no application, there's been no additional discussion. There, there are two major pending proposed projects where applications either are almost submitted or in the near future will be submitted, and that is for the proposed Vons and for the proposed conservancy project. And those are the two pending major projects out there where we anticipate an application and vetting before the planning commission as early as October.
And the only one of those would, that would have a huge impact on water would be the Vons, because the, with the Trailhead project, that's repurposing a hotel to basically a meeting space and a, and a corporate facility, if you will. So that impact on water would dramatically decrease as it is.
However, though, if there's no...
Have you approved the plans yet?
No.
No.
However, my bono contention is if there's no water, it doesn't matter if it's repurposed, there's no water.
What about Hamilton Cove? Isn't there like seven houses being built out there?
Uh, there are six single-family residences that are being built in the footprint of what was initially approved as multi-unit condominiums. So the, the impact is actually less than what was initially approved.
Swimming pools?
Um, I, I don't recall if there were swimming pools.
Four, I think.
Okay, well, they, they would certainly be under whatever the tariff.
But I don't, I have four swimming pools and I don't know if they're fresh or salt water. I'm hoping they're salt, but I really doubt they are.
Under the tariffs, they can't proceed, but yes, under the allocation or the allotment, whatever word we want to use, yes, they can't, they can proceed with the...
They can't give a willing permit now. On phase two.
All right, we entered phase two.
You can't do anything.
Not even a permit?
No, because, because of phase two stops you.
Okay.
So there's been no tentative or any preliminary assurances given for major developments?
No, no wink, wink, nod, nod, handshake, deal, no, nothing, nothing like that, we're...
Nothing that encouraged them to go out and spend millions of dollars on a new well?
Well, you know, obviously, certainly, you know, we, as, as a city, you know, we, we have to be impartial and judicious and considerate of any proposal that's brought before us. So in concept, you know, without a lot of detail, it's very hard for us to make any type of decision. We've only received very preliminary discussions and we provided the island company with about two pages of questions and concerns that we had, to which we have not received an answer to. And independent of that, you're right, then, then effort was undertaken to start this, this well process. So that's, that's exactly where things stand. And in fact, the document from that meeting where those questions are listed is public and I'd be happy to provide it to you, see, see exactly what our concerns were. They were along the lines of, I think, where you're going, infrastructure, impact to, to resources, congestion, public safety, et cetera, et cetera.
And in the process, they came last October and they had this really accelerated timeline for a defined, defined development agreement where they wanted to get a DDA in six months. And out of that first meeting, it came all these questions that went back to them and they haven't come back. And so until they get the development agreement signed, if they ever do with us, they have no promises, you know, they can process the application like they are with Vons as a single project, but I don't know why I want to spend $2 million either.
Okay, well, I, because the question obviously comes up, if, if they haven't been given any significant encouragement or assurances legally, because we've seen in the paper two or three times now that the city was, I mean, the island company was ready to sue the city if they imposed that water conservation or ordinance. So how does that, how do you see yourself structured if for some reason they find water and you say, well, no, we're still in a critical situation, no deal?
Well, I would still...
You haven't made any deals.
It'd be very straightforward to me, I just would want satisfactory answers to every single question that we, we would have. And then as the mayor pro temp alluded to, with some satisfactory responses, we would then negotiate an agreement with them, assuming that was in, in the interest of the, the community. And if we did anything like that, we obviously would have to address the concerns related to infrastructure, resources, et cetera, et cetera. It'd have to be abundantly clear to us and we'd have to know that we had the political will to support it to, to move forward, if that makes sense.
The political will and the planning will, because the key is...
Right. I guess I can't stress enough how preliminary we are in this process. At this point, it's just very, I mean, I have not even seen any type of, to, to, to describe the concept as high level would be an understatement. I would say it was a 75,000 foot level concept. I, I couldn't even begin to speak to the detail. And I don't even know if I have the number of homes right in my head or exactly where they would...
125.
No. I don't even know how big each home approximately would be. I mean, you know what I mean? These are things I have no idea, because I've not seen any. So I can't, I can't speak to it.
Now, which proposal are you referring to? Is that, I say, which proposal are you referring to?
The island company's proposal to build additional homes around the golf course.
Right.
Is that the same one that you're speaking of?
Yes.
Yeah.
And these are not economy houses. You can guess.
So I've heard, but again...
It doesn't take much imagination to say that these are going to be pretty, pretty good-sized luxury homes.
I, I would imagine, but again, I don't have anything to, I, I can't even speculate because I've not seen it.
Yeah. No, I guess my, my real point was really that all of the discussion ends up with the planning commission and, and the direction that they are given in how to deal with any future permits. And they can just, they can pull them or they can grab them.
And then they make the recommendation on the DDA and the council adopts the DDA. And defined development agreement, what that does is it freezes the development standards and extends the timeframe.
And the council can do that.
The, the planning commission recommends to the council, the council can adopt or not adopt.
Council can do it by themselves.
No, they need the planning commission recommendations.
They can get out a recommendation from the planning commission.
I don't think so.
They can set development limits.
Development limits with code, but I think the, the DDA needs to be, come from the planning commission and the council and then gets enacted as an ordinance.
Thank you, Rudy.
Yeah, thank you very much. Who else wants to come up and say hi, talk about something? Wes, do you want to talk about anything?
Wes Curry, Environment Strategies Consulting. We operate the wastewater plant for the city. Um, I've been, my career's been in the public sector, working for cities that own their own water, so I'm, you're in a very strange situation, like Ben refers to, you're at a very high level or in infancy of designing what you're trying to accomplish. One thing I'd like to speak to is the well, the well process, and Joe, please correct me if I'm wrong, they have to ask for permit to drill to see what it'll produce. It is an aquifer, it's on the basin. The stage is defined, all basins within the state, and even if it's a lower aquifer or upper aquifer, it still sits in the same basin. When you drill a well, if you negatively impact the basin, you are liable. If you cause pollutants to go in the basin, you're liable. The Orange County Water Works that you all hear about this great success story was because they were liable for seawater intrusion into the Orange County aquifer and it spent billions and billions of dollars to clear it up. And they're still doing it. The West Basin Project, the Orange County Groundwater replenishment District, and they have done world-class efforts in taking sewer water at about 200 million gallons a day, transforming it into a potable drinking water and depositing it upstream in the Anaheim Hills to bleed down into the aquifer and support their basin. They'll be through this drought because of that great effort and that's been over since the 1935s when that first went into effect. So they've got a long history at this and you're in the very beginning. One thing that I do see not happening here that as, as a city you would see happening is Southern California, Edison needs to be at the table. If they're not going to give somebody a will serve letter, then how are you controlling your building? In a city, you would give them a will serve letter and you'd be liable. I would go to a builder, he would, he would apply for a building permit, I would give him, okay, we'll give you water and we'll guarantee that water. Who's doing that here? This is a question that is out there. Edison needs to be at the table talking to you and saying, this is what we can do, this is what we can't do. The seawater plant. Huntington Beach is a new project coming online, 50 million gallons a day of seawater. There are, in between beach wells and open intake. Carlsbad is under construction, 50 million gallon a day project, straight seawater. That's actually in construction right now, the foreign cement. It's taken them close to 20 years to get to that point. They were successful in Tampa Bay to a degree. So it's, it's, it's a science that's world renowned. There's 15,000 seawater plants in the world, the United States has about eight. That's how cautious we are and high in the scheme of things we are. What does that mean for you? The offshore regulations that are being developed by the regional board, it's defining what we can put back into the ocean is being rewritten. They can't just automatically go out and increase the flow at the plant if they would like to. They're going to have to mitigate and it's going to be tough. It's going to take years to get that plant up in production. These are things that all have to be considered. I don't have answers, I can only point to processes that needs to happen and you need Edison at the table. You need an Edison representative who can make decisions and talk intelligently and sit down and say, we can do this, we can do this, we can't do this. Recycle water. Right now, you're dumping about 500,000 gallons a day out to sea of water that is your drinking water mixed with seawater. We are working with city staff to eliminate the seawater intrusion coming into the wastewater plant because it's creating treatment problems for us. plant because it's creating treatment problems for us. We are seeing about 300,000 of that 500,000 as salt water, and we're seeing about 200,000 of that 500,000 as potable water coming off of your seawater treatment plant and your Thompson Reservoir. If we can lower that, we can reduce the costs to your salt water system. Right now, you're pumping all of that seawater up to the top of the mountain at Ada and Falls, and you're gravity-feeding it back down your sewer system, and we're pumping it up to the sewer plant and we're taking it up to sea. And we're being held accountable for it by the Regional Board. Can we minimize your cost of operating a wastewater plant? Yes, we're trying to do that. Dennis and Ben have been working with us and trying to close off your seawater intrusion at your seawall. It's been effective, we have scientific proof of its validity to try and reduce that seawater coming into the plant and improve the quality of the recycled water should you ever go there. Your TDS of your typical wastewater plant's 1,000, ours is 21,000. If we can reduce that, we can make a lower-cost recycled water. You would have to go to tertiary, which would be filtered, but because of the high salinity, you would have to do some type of RO. It'd be about $1,500 an acre foot. Edison on your first tier is charging you about $1,300 an acre foot. Also finances. There needs to be a financial report, there needs to be a study of all of these done. There needs to be a feasibility study on the possibility of using recycled water. The well, if you are drilling down to a lower aquifer, it's all the same water, it's just one's an older water, that's all. If you are accessing that older water, what's the negative impact going to be on the basin? After they get the permit to drill the shallow well, which they have, the test well, then they have to go before CEQA. They have to tell the State Board what they're going to do, and they have to prove to the State Board that that water's there. At that point, you have the option to interject your thoughts into the State Regional Water Quality Control Board process, the Department of Water Resources, and say, "We would like to see this, this, or this." Doesn't mean you're going to get it, it means that they will consider it and then they will put restrictions on the pumping, and they will put monitoring wells. And they will say, "You'll monitor the riparian habitat, you'll monitor negative impacts to the basin." And they will pump as a stopgap, so they can pull into the deeper aquifer, which is good management practices, but they have to be able to replenish it. They can't deplete the groundwater. They get to that level, they're negatively impacted, there's seawater intrusion, there's impact on the riparian habitat downstream, and there's going to be problems, which again, we'll come back on the ripaires. The ripaires fund all of this. So you have a lot of options here with your recycle. It's your, you own it, you can treat it and irrigate with it to a degree. It has, there's a legal aspect there, there's a lot of water rights issues that have to be looked at from BB&amp;K, and then your financial experts have to look at it and see what's it going to cost and who's going to pay for it. And those are all, there's a lot of possibilities here, but you're going to limit, your imagination is going to stop you or help you to get to that solution, because it doesn't look good. My career's been in groundwater, water plants, public water treatment. In a study that, some of the slides that Joe stuff had there came from the Mount Wodoc slides and Metropolitan Water District slides. On those, in those slides... I lost between a thought for a second. Oh, anyways, I'll have to come back to that.
Yeah, recycled slides.
I'm sorry?
Recycled slides, yeah, they're met, you never see those a lot.
Yeah, I totally lost it, thinking too fast. Anyways, that would be what I would have to contribute. If you have any questions, I can point to those areas that we might be able to help or where we need to go, but I think you're all trying hard, you're all doing a great job, and the only way is just to keep practicing, keep chipping away at it. But there's got to come, oh, I'm sorry, now I got it, thank you. This drought is not the first of its kind. The worst drought was a 450-year drought on the Colorado River, that was back about 4,000 years ago. So is this drought over this year? I don't know, but it's going to come back, about every 12 years it comes back. All of us are old enough to remember the droughts, the last seven droughts. Are you going to be in this boat again in seven, 10 years? Those are your decisions. And how can you come up with answers to get through this? What if it doesn't rain next year? What's going to happen to your city? What's going to happen to town? And how can you bring quick solutions? There are, the Office of Emergency Services was opened up by the governor, there is funding. There is some funding available there, are those options you can look at? This is where your finance department needs to be looking at and see if you can run an ROD cell. And is Edison at the table helping you with this? Because they're a major key partner here, like them or not, they're a key partner. You have to ask them to come to the table and work with them. They're a great company, they have a lot of power, they've supported you guys for years, and you see if you can get them in here to work with you and help you get through this to keep Avalon healthy. That's it for me. Any questions?
Of the, of all the water that goes into our sewer treatment plant, I know there's no way, once it gets to you guys, to separate the fresh from the salt, I mean, as it comes from town out to there. We have salt water coming out, we have fresh water, and it gets to you and it's all one body of water. How much of that can we possibly reuse? I mean, can we reuse a lot of that? I mean, efficient, effectively, efficiently, cost-effectively?
In the state it's in right now, it would cost you about 15, well, let me take that back, that's with rebates from Met. Without rebates from Met, it's considered to be about $1,800 an acre foot. That's what seawater, $1,800 to $2,000 an acre foot, that's what seawater is going to cost you to treat. You're going to have to effectively treat it as seawater at this point, your TDS is too high. You're going to have to put a RO, a seawater RO plant there with the capability of treating high TDS water. You would get about a 50% recovery.
50% recovery, okay.
50% recovery, so that 500,000 a day would be about 250,000 gallons a day that you'd be able to use for non-potable purposes.
That's huge. Would you suggest we go after that? I mean, just out of your professional and expert opinion?
I would suggest, you do, yes, but I would suggest that you're going to have to put this on the backs of the taxpayers, of their customers. And how are you going to break this down in feasible bites to make it to where they're not going to be sticker-shocked, some of these things? These are things that most cities have been working on for years, and you're just starting in infancy, so what's your options? How much can you take a little bit of time and finance these and get grant funding if there's funding available? A lot of cities have implemented these with grant funding. There's, Modoc has a great resource for pointing you in some of those directions, because you're out of the Orange County area, you're out of metropolitan area, it limits some of your funds, but you still have state funding and federal funding that you can go after. But start at these on a small basis, start working at it little by little with a master plan. You need to have a master plan. Where are you going? I don't see a roadmap here, I hear a bunch of good ideas, but I don't see a plot and a map to say, "We want to be here in 20 years, or in 15 years, or 10 years." And that's what you need, a master plan.
Okay.
And then start chipping away at it.
This is a start, and you're part of that start, and I appreciate your input, for sure.
You're welcome. Anything else?
No, Wes, thank you very much. Wes is on a reclaimed body, then, so it's wonderful having him there as well, so thank you.
We need to use his expertise and his knowledge and wisdom as we should, because he's with us. That's a great, thank you, Wes.
Leslie Warner, 306 Whitley. Just to bring it back to the here and now, like Rudy said, and since we have an Edison representative here, I did call Ryan over town in the Tariff Division of Edison to find out how Edison was going to inform us of the revisions to our tariff. And he mentioned that they might be drafting a letter, but perhaps Mr. Lawrence could give us an update on the revisions to the water tariff. I think it's a very important information for all of us to have. What I read on the back of the Islander last, or the Bay News, last Friday or Thursday, did not seem current with the new tariff. Also, I think consumers need to really be aware of your billing cycle, your water billing cycle. It can fluctuate, it may say on your bill that your water meter will be read on August 21st, but they might decide to read it a day before or a day after. And if you're in really tight allotment, or you maybe have more water right now, but next month you have less, and they choose to change the billing cycle for you, you're going to be in trouble. So I would encourage customers to really be aware of your billing cycle, find out when they read your meter so that you know how much water you really have, because right now, if you're getting 60 gallons a day, and then you think you still have 60 gallons a day until August 28th, but they decide to read the meter early and your next allotment is 40 gallons a day, you're going to be screwed. So I would really encourage customers to be aware of that. We just went through this with our water bill, and I just became like, kind of surprised that Edison does have that flexibility, and I know they're trying really hard to meet our demands of understanding this allotment issue, but they can read the meter the day before, the day after, they say they're going to, and if they're supposed to read it on a Friday, they can also read it on a Monday. And if they're supposed to read it on a Friday and Monday is Labor Day, they can read it on Tuesday. So you really have to dial in your billing cycles, and it'd be great if Edison would also put up that wonderful sign somewhere downtown, something like this. I walked all Front Street today, I didn't see any signs like this for our visitors. I know there's little tents in the informations, cards in the restaurants, but I still feel that we need Edison on board with us for informing not only our visitors, but our local residents. So I would love to have an update from Edison about how they plan to publicize all of this.
And Leslie, I did...
Excuse me?
There are two banners.
Like this?
Yeah.
Where?
Wrigley Plaza.
It was on Wrigley Station.
They moved it.
No?
There, and on the other block.
High, really high.
High, like, so, there you walk.
You'll see it next time.
Okay, I missed it today, I didn't see anything on Wrigley Stage. And I went to the library because I understood they were putting a meter, a gauge, a water gauge at the library. It's not at the library.
No, no. One on the stage, I was going to say, but it's gone.
The banner? The banner, Wrigley Stage got moved to the Green Pier, okay.
But the gauge? Where's the gauge?
One of them is here.
Right.
In the, which, and then the other one, I don't believe has arrived yet. That one should probably be moved downtown post haste, because it's not doing any good sitting here.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yes, and also, and I did talk with Ben, and he has it on his notes for questions, about the meter reading days and things like that, because he understands that that's critical as well. And here comes Mr. Lawrence.
Jeff Lawrence, Southern California Edison, project manager for the Stage Two Water Rationing. To answer your questions, Leslie, the updated Schedule 14.1, the tariff for water rationing, is available at sc.com backslash Catalina tariffs. It's the updated tariff effective August 11th, and a letter will be distributed to all our customers within about a week or so with the hard copy of the new Schedule 14.1. And that'll have all the revisions, which did take a lot of input from the protests, to our initial advice filing in consideration. There is also still a sign that has yet to be delivered that will be placed at the Wrigley Stage with a water level reservoir. And then we are also waiting on additional sign to be placed at the post office, which the Island Company has given us permission to put a sign similar, exactly like the one that's here in City Hall.
Jeff, the last time you were here, we talked about, you've got the phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four, but we were talking about expanding what phase one means, what phase two means, what phase three, and phase like, you know, phase two is a 25% reduction mandatory, phase three is a 50% reduction, and phase four is a 75% reduction. And we know what phases mean, no, but I mean, some people in Avalon probably don't know, a lot of our visitors don't understand what the phases mean, so I think it'd help to clarify what the fate, what the impact of it is, the magnitude.
The percentage of the reduction?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't have the artwork in front of me, it's, I can check on it and see if that was incorporated into the Wrigley Reservoir sign. That suggestion was made after this sign was already fabricated, so we can make any change on that, but I'll check on the Wrigley Reservoir sign.
And I understand that every Friday, someone's calling into Dudley and he's going to be changing the little numbers on the thing and dropping it.
Yeah, that's correct. He's on our email distribution list for the reservoir level.
Right.
That's a pessimist, dropping it down. It might go up.
No comment.
I have a question for Edison.
You know me as Pam Pilch. My parents live at 346 La Cumbres. We were out at the reservoir yesterday, and it was a very drastic shock to see the level. I've never seen that, and I was here at the last time, in the 70s, when we had the allocation and the drought. I have a question for Edison. This is all well and wonderful about drilling and experimenting to find out other ways of getting water. Well, if the drought continues, we're below 300 acre feet, what is the contingency plan for water when you run out?
Yeah, I apologize, we're not prepared to discuss questions like that tonight. We weren't part of this agenda. Leslie, I had immediate answers for your question, but we're not prepared to get into this discussion, all right?
Okay, Jeff, that's fair. How would you like to proceed?
Well, if I could make a...
I just want to compliment my daughter for introducing that question. If Edison can't come forward and tell you what a contingency plan is, where are we? There is no assurance that there's going to be any rain.
Not for two...
And she's absolutely right. I've got a series of photos of the reservoir from about roughly four years now, and it's drastically low. I mean, physically, there's, and they know that, they're monitoring the water amounts, they're not taking in how much is being stored, but where are we? I think that's a question that the council really needs to pursue with Edison government. Are you all aware that you have a general plan? I heard a question being asked about general plan, and it sounded to me like nobody knows that there is a general plan. You have a coastal zone development plan, and you have a whole series of elements that belong to that plan. Are you aware that there's a general plan? That's the responsibility of the City Council and the Planning Commission to effectively review periodically and kind of establish what your limits can be, and not only physically, but what can you provide in a way of infrastructure? So, but I think the most important one at the present time, obviously, is what's the backup plan?
Well, it seems like in 1977, when you had the big one, and you were on the council at the time, there was, we were reading the minutes, and it said that Edison, if it gets real bad, the bottom line is that they will have to barge over water, just as they are doing on the West End. So that, I would imagine, to be their contingency plan, when the wells one dry, they're going to be bringing water over.
Is that what you all believe is the proper course of action today?
We don't know, they haven't shared that yet.
That was fine, you know, 40 years ago, 30 years ago.
That's the only...
But is it really appropriate today?
Yeah. And, yeah, at some point, Los Angeles County's going to say, "I'm sorry, we're not going to give you any of our water."
Exactly, they've got a problem over there, too.
Exactly, so, good question. Add that to our list of questions, if you wouldn't mind.
The contingency plan?
Yeah, for Edison, yeah. Go ahead, Cindy.
Well, that's, the inability for Edison to answer questions to us as a City Council, that's been ongoing, and the pertinent questions that we ask deserve answers, and we're not getting it. So that's why we've begun this meeting, we brought it in front of the people, it's obvious now what's going on and how we're being treated as council members, and we're going to act on that. And all we can do is let the community know that we will push forward with this. Yes, we need to work with Edison, but as you just saw, Sir Rust, West, the gentleman walked out of the room. He refused to answer our questions. They've never sent us an expert. Ron Hite's guy. Ron Height's got up here, he's told us he's an expert, but we all know he's not an expert. He's not an expert at anything, except telling us he's an expert. We've got some serious problems here. People are seriously being affected by it. And because of this kind of behavior, we're going to do something about it. We're going to start taking some action, and it's going to be real soon.
And with that-
And I hope the council is behind me on this, because as you just saw, there's been a display of behavior that's, it's kind of childish, and those are the people that we're relying on, we're depending on. Joe, we're going to need you in the near future, sir. So I hope you're going to go to bat for us, because we're going to be doing some business with you guys, and we want some production out of you, sir, and out of your company. Because we've been taking a lot of, a lot of grief from our constituency about how expensive your law firm is, but it's a good law firm, okay?
I appreciate that.
No, it's a good law firm. We're paying them big, and we're taking some serious criticism about it, but I believe in you guys. You're still here, you're still our attorneys. We believe in you, you're going to bat for us, and you see what's going on in this city. I mean, we got, we got the major stakeholder, the people who are delivering our water, walking out of a meeting like a little child, that's what we're dealing with right now, okay? We got, we got about 5,000 people watching this right now, and they're wondering what they're going to do when it doesn't rain. Okay, so I'll tell everybody, we'll bring in water, we'll ship it in. Whether Edison does it or not, we will pay for it, you will pay for it, unfortunately. I mean, we're paying for them to ship water to the kids on the West End right now than Emerald Bay and Holland's Landing, okay? At a dollar a gallon. And they couldn't ship it more inefficiently, in trucks, two trucks, they hold 5,000 gallons each. $10,000 a barge is what they're paying, what you're paying. So let's get serious, tell us what you think, approach your council members, give us some input, if you have knowledge, give us, give us your knowledge, and we'll go to bat for you. We have a good law firm backing us up, and we plan on having a plan. We have experts such as Wes and, and Joe, and we got a good, we have a good city manager, he's willing to do a lot of good work for us, so let's do this.
Wes Curry again. Your plant makes 250,000 gallons of water a day, your seawater plant. That equates to about 21.5 acre feet a month. If you do the math, that's roughly about 250 acre feet a year, just out of your seawater plant. You're losing 350 to 450 acre feet a year. I'm not Edison, and I really don't have the authority to speak for Edison, and you really need to work with him, because that's your quick solution. I understand your frustrations, but I also understand that you're in a pretty precarious position, and spring's coming soon. Can you, when you do your 25% cutback, say you're doing 350 acre feet a year, you do 25% cutback, you're about 275 acre feet. When you get the 50% cutback, you're about 175 acre feet a year, that you're going to be requiring your citizens to utilize. Your seawater plant will provide that, but I'm, I can't speak for Edison, you really need to ask them to come into the room and explain these things to you. These are your numbers that are out there, this is public information. That's based on that plant running 28 days a month with two to three days a month downtime. And that's totally reasonable within a seawater facility. I've toured the plant, it's more than capable of getting this water, and I've interviewed the operators. So you've got, it's a good resource, it's a good asset. I would suggest trying to work with them, and I know it's frustrating, I've had personal experience, but I also know that you need all the help you can get, and they're a tremendous resource. And if the gentleman walked out, I'm sure he had his reasons, you need to speak to Ron Height or whoever above him, and see what you can do to get them to respond, because it is a critical issue. And use all your leverage that you can. In court, it's going to take a long time. Expand the D-SAL plant in two years. Bringing in, margining in the water, it's outrageous. Do you need to do that, though? Are those numbers you really need to look at? Simple math, 21 and a, 21.5 acre feet a month, 12 months. In the months you don't do that, can Edison pump it up to the reservoir and restock the reservoir? So what questions that they can answer, but we need them here. This is their system, and they own it, and they have constitutional rights to that system that we have to respect. Am I correct?
Yeah, their system, they own it, yeah.
So I would really work hard to get them in here, and talk to them at an intelligent level, and see what they can do to help us out.
Thank you, Wes.
Absolutely will do that.
Okay, you were planning on going hour and a half, and we beat that, didn't we, once again?
Can we come back around and see what some of our options are, and where we need to go from here? Please, anybody?
If I could just crystallize, I think what we were really coming to with the presentation was, I think there are kind of three things. There's certainly, we could pursue an effort to collaborate with Edison, because they are the owner of the assets and the controller of the water rights. We could pursue ownership of the system through a purchase or a condemnation effort. We could pursue reforming the island consortium, or any combination, I think, of those three options. But that, those, one of those three things probably needs to be the direction if we are to move forward, else we're just spinning our wheels.
I could say, to follow up on Wes's point on the water recycling, that could be part of the collaboration with Edison. The city were to undertake expansion of its water recycling, it might be something that Edison would be agreeable, where they wouldn't necessarily have issues with the provision of water from, that results from that. But I also want to reiterate, just for the overall discussion, that I do think that what Wes also said on the financial projections is extremely important for all of these analyses. And I don't have those, and I don't know how long or expensive those would take, but I think deciding whether, given the fact that the system is going to need significant upgrades, and there's going to be the cost of purchasing it as well, figuring out, you know, what the cost is, and that's very helpful information that Wes provided him on per acre feet, and how much is salt, and how much is fresh. That whole analysis, I think, should be able to put some numbers around certain options that then can give you a sense of, if you were to pursue a community services district, or if you were to pursue some kind of collaboration, what would the potential impacts to rate pairs be? If the city owned and operated it, would the rates be higher? Maybe they would, and if they were, then maybe that's okay, because there's more ability for the city to make decisions for the long-term supply reliability that, you know, maybe we're just going to pay more for water, but we're going to feel good about the fact that we can crank up the D-SAL facility to a certain level, and we're not going to have a problem. So I think the finances are really kind of an important piece.
How do we go about finding out if forming the district, or the water district-
Community service district.
Community service district is the right way to go? I mean, financially, if the city, if we created this community service district, and it thus would, it would cost ratepayers this much money to garner water from that direction versus staying with Edison, how do you find out if that's the right way to go? I mean, do we, do we do a study? Do we have a specialist come in?
Right, we, there are people that do that type of exercise, and we could certainly ask somebody to perform that.
I mean, I think that would be our, for me, that would be the first step. Does this even make sense for us to do?
I think there's two steps. They're parallel paths. I think there's the recycle side, and then there's the potable side. And I think the recycle, we can go forth bigger, because I think we need to figure out what that's going to cost us, what the modification sewer plant going to be, you know, we're going to get the water charged to system, how we're going to, if the county's going to let us do it. But I think that's a separate path. I think the other path is, I'm kind of like, like consortium idea, because those will be the people that'll play, and I think we'll task them with coming up with the models that make sense. Would be Mike, too soon.
I like that.
I know that the, the reclamation group that's been meeting, there's the, at any rate, too, I don't know. You were at the meeting the other day, Wes, Dennis, you were there, correct? Yeah. The group that's going to come and give us-
Speaking to the Mike Andy.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's the group that we met with last Thursday, and they're going to provide us with a, with a proposal on where to go on the reclamation, and like what I think Joe says, you know, you got to talk to the players and know what their relationships are going to be with you, because you've got to learn your stumbling blocks, as well as how you then go forward. So we're going to be getting a proposal, the city's going to be getting a proposal from them to review. And then we can look at that, but then we can also look at how we need Joe, or how we want to go on the water district. I think we want to really investigate the water district, and I think, remember, we got that article the other day that said, we may have to spend some money, and sometimes we may fail, but we sure got to try to forge ahead, and I think this is one of those leaps of faith and focus we want to drive.
It seems to make sense to re-initiate the consortium group, which we've already said, we've already given the direction to go out and look at that and reform, and then participate at whatever level that we can, so I think we're already underway there.
Very preliminary, but I think we wanted to give you guys kind of a broader spectrum as to what's at stake, so you can make a more informed decision. So it sounds like we're hearing, are we pursuing the mayor pro tem suggestion?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think it's good.
Well, let me ask a question to clarify that further. Is it to look at, are we, are we our own water district? Are we a JPA or a consortium? Do we look at the options, what the pros and cons of both of those are, or we just want to go towards the consortium?
I don't really think a JPA is viable, because you need another public agency, and you have to either form one or convince some other existing one, which I, the only one I could even think of would be LA County, which would be a real stretch, so.
Oh, that's something I can't beat the conservancy or that.
No.
Oh, government.
Right, so I think that, in theory, a JPA is possible, but in reality, probably not.
Who's the consortium made up of?
The last time the consortium was together, and the mayor pro tem can probably better speak to this, but I believe it was the city, the island company, the conservancy, USC, and the camps. Am I forgetting anybody?
Uh, there was-
Oh, sorry, Hamilton Co., homeowners association as well.
And various other stakeholders and communities.
Well, officially, those were the members that were listed, according to CPUC. Those, that's who was in it.
Camps. The camps besides the island company-owned camps? I mean, uh-
Forgive the ignorance, but it was Ross Turner was representing the camps, and I don't know all the camps that were comprised of that, maybe the mayor pro tems.
Allen's Emerald, Toyon, CBS.
Because I'm just concerned, concerned about how many of these, these different consortium members are one in the same, or have the same board of trustees and the same board of directors?
All separate.
All separate. The island company, and the conservancy, and-
Very separate.
And the camps, um-
Camps are tenants of either the island company or the conservancy, but that's the connection, huh?
Island company, conservancy, that's almost one in the same, isn't it?
No.
No?
No.
Really?
Yeah.
Hmm, explain that a little more, what do you mean?
You lose a tax badge if you get too commingled.
Oh, okay. Well, we got to make sure we keep an eye on that, because I think they're commingling anyway, so, so I don't know, this, the consortium sounds a little bit weak to me, because it removes some of our teeth, but at the same time, I know we have to, we have to give and take here. So I'm willing to do that, if we need to do that. We have to sit at the table with Edison if they, if we can keep them from walking out of the room, and we can get them to bring an expert up to talk to us about some things. But they, we haven't been able to do that. Come on, we've had two, they've had two meetings on tariffs, we've had water meetings, we've begged them, we've pleaded with them to come to the table. I think Wes, I want to do what you, what, what you're suggesting, Wes, but it's really difficult. We begged them to give us some experts, to explain these things in depth to us, to give us some clarity and some answers, so that we can answer the people that we represent. And we're not getting it.
We're just going to have to try harder.
We have to try harder? We got to plunge on ahead and do what we have to do. But yes, we got to take some steps in the dark, maybe spend some money that we don't know exactly if it's going to, anything's going to pan out from it, but I think the people of Avalon would back us if they know that we're going to bat for them. So whatever you guys decide, I'm willing to, I've come to terms with a compromise.
Okay, so it sounds like there's direction to pursue what would be involved with increasing the output of the wastewater treatment plant via recycled water. Am I understanding that correctly? Okay, one, one request. Second, to pursue, I think, the reformation of the island consortium with the thought of trying to pursue a community service district, is that correct as well?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, Denise, do we, do we have these? You got these, these down?
I believe so.
Okay, just keep me honest here, want to make sure.
I tend to the Mike Andy's.
Joe?
Let me ask another question, just, I'm sorry, the whole water storage is, and is that something that Edison does? Is that something that we can do to help the city, and that water gets back into the system? Or is that, is that something that happens later? Where does water storage come in and?
Well, Edison owns the infrastructure and the reservoir, so the water they're storing there is their water. If we were to want to store water someplace else and create a new above-surface storage, that would be pretty difficult to do for a variety of permanent reasons. Now, Wes is correct when he said, we do own our wastewater. So that is one element that I probably didn't touch on enough. So that's, we would have the right to that if we clean that up. However, we do need to communicate with Edison as to how we use it, not to run afoul of the other, some of those rules, yeah. But as far as storage, you know, whether, if we were, it's very difficult for us to store water ourselves, absent owning the infrastructure.
Cool. Any of the others?
I hear the question.
Okay.
Wait, before you, before you close, can I make an announcement that has nothing to do with what we've been talking about?
Make it quiet.
No, no action. I just wanted to tell everybody, if anybody's listening, that is, there's extremely high tides and extremely high swells and surges tonight, up to 10 to 20 feet, so make sure you take care of your kids, you know where they're at, your animals, and be careful out there, because this whole island is being inundated with a surge and a swell up to 20 feet that I haven't seen in about 40 years. So take care out there, everybody.
Yeah, actually, I'm glad you brought that up, because, real quick, I did get an update from the fire department. Pebble Beach Road is closed. We've got a medical patient being transported by helicopter, because the surge isn't permitted removal by the boat. Several locations at Pebble Beach are flooding, and Edison is on the scene of a power pole that is being undermined. So we've got extra staff, AKA reserves, that are being alerted, and again, it's in anticipation of that 1022 high tide.
Wow, okay, thank you.
It's not even a high tide yet.
Beating a drum.
Glad I'm not in the pool.
One less email. Smoothed ride. Hey, Joe?